All right, well, I may go ahead and call this work session.
Seems almost empty.
Definitely, please call the roll. As Councilor Pizza here, Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker. Give it a couple of minutes till we heard a door mark seven official.
Yeah.
Say here. Okay, Councilor Extra.
Here.
Councilor Hopkinson.
Here.
Here, Kathleen.
Here.
Kathleen, we've marked you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, welcome to our work session. Pretty brief one today on Pleasant Street Master Plan. Jordan, why don't you go ahead and kick us off?
Thanks, Mayor. So, the Pleasant Street Master Plan has been discussed by the council, I think, informally for a while now. I know I've heard about it for about four years and the work that went into it. I think in 2017, 18 and preparing the plan. It was a council goal to look at the Pleasant Street as a way to extend our downtown. Think about walkability in the downtown, bringing retail core further out. And kind of taking it away from 26 hustle and bustle and making it a little more pleasant experience for folks in the downtown. And so Kelly and his staff worked on this plan. Really back in 2018, I think.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, eighteen. And since then, I think there was a kind of a period of time where, you know, we went into COVID and there were some interns that kind of worked on it. But they've since been trying to bring this plan to a point where we can bring it in front of the city council for consideration. The planning and the planning commission for consideration for adoption. And I know there's been interest by the city council as we think about urban renewal, we think about our downtown, to discuss the plan, learn more about it, find out where we are, where it was left off. And then what's the next steps for ultimately finalizing the plan and adopting it? And think about how we implement it. So I think Kelly and David and staff. Label this as a reintroduction of the plan because I think some city councillors will recall some of the outreach and work that went into it. And for others, this is kind of a new opportunity to learn more about what is this plan? Was it include what is kind of a vision for Pleasant Street look like? And what's next for adopting this plan and thinking about how we implement it? So Kelly will have a slideshow, I think it was in the packet too, to kind of walk you through it. And chance to ask questions and learn more about the vision for Pleasant Street.
Thank you, Jordan. Yeah, so the staff report was written by David and the presentation by Shelley Dennison in my office. So I just want to say thanks to both of them for doing the heavy lifting. I did very little compared to them, so I know my name's on there, but I just want to give credit where credits do. So Jordan said, this, the work on this began, I believe, mid 2017. And we'll go into that a little bit more in the slideshow here in a few minutes. But basically, it really goes back decades at this point. I believe back to the 1997 work with that comp plan and looking at expanding the downtown. And then I know there was a request from Scott Lazenby to the Planning Division, I believe in around 2013 or something, to start looking into this and start doing some work on it. I don't know why kind of that was, there was a delay between then and 2017, but there was. Then we had hired a rare intern, Emma Porculow, a few of you might remember her. And she worked on it for about a year, maybe 15 months. We hit a few obstacles or roadblocks and then we had to do some additional reconsiderations, which you'll see reflected in the presentation tonight. I then had another intern, Christina Winberry, work on it for a little while. With ACOM, who is the engineer that we hired to do the fee estimation that is in your package tonight. And so a lot of the public input process, which there was a lot, was done in 2017 and 18. And then a lot of the engineering work was in 2018 and 2019. We do have updated revised numbers for you that we just got from ACOM, I believe, two or three weeks ago. So those are in the packet and they're reflective of revised construction estimates. As of 2023 dollars, actually projecting a little bit even. So that kind of gives you a little bit of background. Part of the reason we kind of put it on hold. Was COVID, but I think a bigger reason was a lot of the legal challenges we're getting with like Shaley Meadows and different subdivisions. And kind of re-prioritizing what our focus was in my department for a few years. But I think we're getting to a point where we can start engaging in this work again. And I know David and Shelley have been working on the master plan that was put together in 2018 and kind of looking at that document and deciding what can be kept, what needs to be revised. Maybe there's an opportunity to go and get some more public input since it's been a few years now. And so one of the big kind of discussion points or one of the big feedback items that we'd like to get, and it doesn't need to be tonight. But for the council, we'll start kind of thinking, considering is kind of your interest in how much or maybe not how much, but kind of your interest in the investment that the urban renewal agency potentially make. And the reason why that's kind of important is because typically with infrastructure planning, as you just recently saw with the Parks and Trails Master Plan, you'll see in 2023 with the Transportation System Master Plan, there's a financially constrained list. And the reason or the way you come up with that list is you kind of know what your funding is going to be over the next five to 20 years. And so with the Pleasant Street Master Plan, we'd be looking at doing something similar is having some sort of. I don't know if we have many funding mechanisms, but some sort of budget essentially that then we could put in as part of our implementation strategy. So that's kind of why we'd like to see your interest in, you know, is the council interested in potentially funding or partially funding this project over the next 20 years? So let me jump right into it.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly. So you're talking about urban renewal funds. And so we're missing a couple of our urban renewal folks.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, that's a very good point. I don't, we're not, we're not asking you to make any financial decisions tonight. We're just kind of reintroducing the project and kind of getting everybody thinking about, is it, is it something that the council and then of course, we would want to have those two people in a future meeting as well? Is it something that everybody would like to consider funding?
Urban renewal just being one of those.
Exactly, exactly correct. And I, and I think, you know, the implementation strategy can take two different paths. You could have one that's similar to a lot of infrastructure planning where, and we'll describe this in the presentation, but you could have one that has funding detailed and then what projects or what portions of this would be completed. But if you decided that you didn't want to go with that path, there's still a lot of work and still a lot of things that can be done. And so, and we can detail those in the presentation more, but you know, it's not like a, if you decide not to fund it at this point, that we're not going to do anything. We'll still go forward with, with completing the plan, hopefully adopting it so that it's codified into the code. And then also, as we'll describe in the presentation, there's other steps we would, we would like to see taken. Does that answer your question, Counselor? And so to kind of break it up, I'm going to present some of this and David's going to present some. So the outline of the presentation, we're going to start with context, go to the goals. Jump to the history, the engagement that was done, kind of the vision slides, which will show a couple different renderings. I think we're going to have some more done. Reengage ACOM on that. The implementation or the potential implementation that we could do from the plan and then future actions. If you want to take it away for a few slides.
Yeah, so first of all, why, why do you feel that this is needed? Mostly for business expansion and development downtown. Since I've been here, the Economic Development Office has focused most of its business recruitment efforts on transforming downtown into more of a desirable target for commercial developers through improving the aesthetics of the area, right? We've made a lot of progress, particularly in the last five years. And as I was going over the list, I noted a few highlights. We've removed, one, two, three, let's see, we've removed one, four, six, seven derelict buildings from the C1 district over the last five years. We've engaged in five tenant improvement grants at La Happy Red Shed, Smokey Heart, the Community Center and Ant Farm. For various things happening on the inside of the buildings. We've done multiple upgrades to Sandy City Hall. We've done multiple upgrades to the community and senior center, done multiple upgrades to Sandy Public Library. We've done multiple upgrades to Mighty Park, including stage lighting and sound systems and the light entry arch in the back parking lot. We've completed more than 40 private commercial building exterior upgrades in the C1 last five years. We've established official visitor center at the museum. We've installed new wayfinding signage throughout the downtown core. We've established mounted farmer's market in, in the central block in the middle of downtown. We've added a uniform streetscape furniture and Sandy area metro stops throughout the downtown. We've contracted without Ant Farm Youth Services to provide a contract to provide downtown maintenance items such as homeless and camera cleanups, minor strip trash removal, all maintenance, projects and street tree trimming. And we've restored all of the murals in downtown at Sandy City Hall. And it's hard to rebuild and that's just the minor stuff. We've also accomplished a lot more one-off. Contributed to a significant increase in term commercial development, which is exactly the goal of all of this. We've converted the brownfield site between Mattress World and 7-Eleven into a Dutch road. San Landia has been built, which is probably the most important commercial development we've had downtown to date. And it is now not only full, but has inspired a second food cart pot over by the gym. We had a business move into the space next to Golden Key, as far as I know. And for a couple of you who've been on council for a long time, you may know the answer, it's better than I. But I don't think there's ever been any of the businesses in that building until recently when Procter Auto Sales moved in. We've converted the unused and derelict old ski shop next to San Landia into a next adventure. The empty lot next to the Action Center has been purchased and will be developed into the new home of Barla Trailback at some point in the future. And also recently purchased with an eye towards future develop, an eye towards future development, not only the VFW building, but the Smith Building too. So we've seen a lot of activity downtown. And I think the, the work that we've done to kind of clean up downtown is kind of a big part of it. Increase in downtown commercial development activity and corresponding decrease in infill space means that it's important now to identify and highlight expansion space for future development in the district. In addition, walkability is critical for the success of downtown commercial development as well. Our downtown expansions area, Pleasant Street, is not currently very walkable by today's standards. You guys are familiar with the infrastructure down there, I'm sure. And this has probably contributed to the lack of commercial development in the area up to this point. Therefore, the most effective solution to address these problems, staff feels, lost my space, problems of a decrease in the existing supply of downtown commercial development space and a lack of walkability in the downtown district is to encourage commercial development north to Pleasant Street, Pleasant Street through planning policy and urban renewal expenditures. Over time, this plan will accomplish both of those goals. Excellent. Not much on this, except to note, the map on the slider shows the focus area of the Pleasant Street Master Plan superimposed over the C1 downtown business district. The main point here is that the implementation of this plan will have a major impact on the district. As you can see, it'll touch most of the lots in the C1 north of Procter Boulevard. And this graph, I'm sure you guys are no doubt familiar, familiar with as well. Sandy's been growing really rapidly since 2000 and may end up growing even faster than what's currently projected on the slide. I think in 2030, it has our population listed at a little over 14,000, a little over 13,000 right now. So it will probably be even a little bit more robust than that. Sandy's also the center of the East Plaquemines County Market Area, which is typical, a market area is typically defined as any, anyone living within a 15-minute drive to city center. But it can be more if there's, if there's no larger market center nearby. For instance, our market area extends all the way to Gobby because there's nothing really bigger than us closer to Gobby on the other side of that. So we've got an abnormally large market area for, for a region, which includes the villages, Boring, Estacada and Eagle Creek, and possibly even some parts of outside of East Fresh. People in our market area shop, bank and find services here because Sandy has a complete collection of goods and services to access, whereas choices might be more limited in their immediate communities. For example, people in Welch's, do there, a lot of people in Welch's do their grocery shopping here because grocery options in the villages are just not that great and, and pretty expensive as compared to get it. People in Estacada buy bicycles in Sandy because there's no bike shop. That's what. So considering our rapidly growing population base and the growing population or market area, the infill lots of the couple are beginning to develop and disappear as businesses respond to increased demands for goods and services. This puts even more pressure on the city to provide more business expansion space. Excellent. So the Pleasant Street Master Plan will accomplish the following goals over the next 15, 20-year period if that's. First and perhaps most importantly, the undergrounding of utilities. The plan calls for undergrounding of all overhead utilities, meaning the electric and some legacy telecom stuff. There's probably not much left down there, but I'm sure there's still a few copper wires down there. For all properties on the street, followed by the removal of the overhead infrastructure supporting these wires. Removes an ugly eyesore, it improves service because there would be no loss of service due to weather or vehicle accidents or whatever. And it removes significant ADA barriers in the pedestrian paths downtown. The second point, it will create a pedestrian-friendly streetscape. The plan calls for the installation of a uniform ADA compliant and Sandy Municipal Code compliant streetscape for the entirety of Pleasant Street. And we'll have a slide showing exactly what this looks like here in a minute. It includes the addition of curbs, ADA compliant sidewalks, planer strips and street trees where none exist, and modifying existing street, streetscape items to meet the standard where applicable. The third point, the reconfiguration of Alt Avenue. We're talking about just a little section there between Proctor and Sandy Grade School. The plan calls for altering Alt Avenue to eliminate through traffic from Alt on the Proctor Boulevard to increase pedestrian access and safety. It would also add color and new patterns to the surfaces on this small stretch of street as well as some permanent flower places to install flowers and some benches and a few other things. Again, we'll, we'll show you a picture of that. And finally, it would incorporate unique placemaking features. Plan calls for the addition of a couple of place making features to give Pleasant Street a unique new identify, identity, including a business recruitment plans, part of the, part of the package to identify what types of businesses council would like to encourage downtown specifically. And some, and potentially some incentives to help move development in that direction. It would include something Councilor Extra, I'm sure will appreciate, will include a public art plan to cite public art installers along Pleasant Street and elsewhere in C1 district. And it would, and finally, it would provide a different and yet Sandy-style compliant color scheme and a different style of streetscape furnishings, meaning, you know, benches, garbage cans, even street lights. Than the standard for the rest of the city to kind of give the district a distinct identity.
So I think, I think I already kind of went over some of this with the history, but this was the basic history of when we had the rare intern. So it started in September of 2017. And kind of went through May of 2018. We had that open house in March of 2018 where a few things happened at that open house where we had to kind of reengage ACOM and kind of come up with an alternative plan to the original one that was proposed. So if you have any questions, we can go into that more, but I'm going to kind of leave it there for now. And then, like I said, it was kind of shelved for several years until recently when David and Shelley had been working on it pretty much off and on this year, kind of looking at the plan. So the engagement, this was the open house. We actually had, it was pretty robust. I think we had like 70 people that showed up. It was at the library, if any of you attended that. See Carl one of these pictures, I know. I can tell the back of that head.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So the, so the re-engagement or the engagement, I'm not going to really talk about all these, but we, we did have some reoccurring themes. If you actually go back and we could share it with the council, if you're interested in kind of seeing the survey results as well. One of the top survey resulted items was actually undergrounding the utilities, which kind of surprised staff at the time, I remember. But that was, I believe, the top one.
I think that's on the next slide.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. So the engagement. So yeah, most people, 87% of the people engaged with said that work was needed on the street. Very few, you know, felt like it was fine to remain as it's been.
This is the 178th survey.
Yes, correct. Most people agree that adding placemaking and order elements was a very important part of the planning efforts. And three quarters of the people believe that underground utilities. So, and as you'll see in the next slide, oh, no, sorry. As you'll see in a few slides later, undergrounding utilities is a significant expense. But as David mentioned.
Did they know how expensive it is beforehand?
But as David mentioned, it does do several things. The other benefit of the undergrounding utilities, so the timing impact is that if you're going to do them, you want to do them at the beginning of the process instead of after we put in, you know, new sidewalks and furniture and street trees, then it's going to be kind of the reverse way of doing things. So I would, I would not recommend doing that if we want to underground them. I think we'd want to do it at the onset of the project. So this is kind of a sample of what the cross-section could potentially look like. You would have wider sidewalks with planer strips. So you'd have about 11 feet of sidewalk and planer strip all along Pleasant. I think for the most part right now in Pleasant, you have five feet. There are a few areas like in front of the Sandy Elementary School that it is a little bit wider.
It's perfect for a tent, right?
But the majority is at five feet currently. You would also, we'd be doing what's called, you know, it's, it's funny because traditionally in, in planning, it's called a road diet. But I've heard that's a negative connotation because people don't like dieting. So I don't know what the new term is, but traditionally it's called road diet. So we'd be slimming down the asphalt section just slightly to accommodate this wider planer strip and sidewalk. The other good thing with slimming down the asphalt section is you can still get in parking on both sides. You can still get in travel lanes, two travel lanes. And then you would be decreasing speeds by making that asphalt a little bit narrower.
Bike lanes?
We would actually be doing a share of, that's what you, that's what you see mainly in a lot of small, actually smaller even cities like Leavenworth. I was going to say bigger cities, but actually even smaller cities that have kind of redesigned. You do a share where the, the bikes share the road with cars. And that also leads to decreased traffic speeds. It also leads to less people using it as a cut through. So there's some science behind it.
Yeah, they're used pretty heavily in Portland on the east side of Portland.
I was going to try not to mention Portland.
Speaking of negatives.
I've had a confrontation or two with a bicycle.
I mean, the simple matter of the fact is that in Sandy there, and maybe this will change over time. But there's not a huge bicycle
No.
culture and a lot of it's to do with our hilly terrain and then also just with all the rain we get.
Saying we don't like hills? There's electric, basically.
Yeah, that's true. So this, this is one vision of what it could look like with West. This is like over to the side here to, on the right-hand side of your screen is kind of the big gray differential down into the property we own by Sandy Elementary School. We, we would like to, you know, show this all kind of built out, but the truth is, this is what it looks like right now. So we just love the pictures as it looks. But you would have, you know, it'd be like similar to any downtown street section where you have sidewalks. This shows planer strips. I don't think you'd want to do that for maintenance purposes. I think you'd want to do tree wells like we've done on Pioneer Park. So we'd get that revised by ACOM. But this kind of gives you a general concept of what the street would look like. This is Alt Avenue. And one of the important reasons I think for designing this a lot different is this is your link from Proctor Boulevard and the Sandy Public Library to Pleasant Street. So I think you really would, and you know, we talked to consultants quite a bit about this. We got public input as well. We also got input from the bank and the leathers and everybody liked this vision for Alt Avenue. It kind of brings you off of the main road to Pleasant Street. You know, you could reverse it where the traffic's going the other way so you can come up. Proctor, this is how the engineer designed it.
So I apologize, we have a hard time visualizing that off of this picture. So this, this doesn't realign, alter that.
It does not, it does not, based on that open house and the communication of your time.
It was the original proposal is to do that to line it up so it wasn't that.
So the, the original proposal, which I'd be happy to share with you in an email, if you want to see it, was to have Shelley Avenue come straight across to Pleasant Street, the gas station and that parking lot would be, would go away basically. And you'd put a plaza off of it. And then where this street is now currently, you would have given most of the parking or a decent percentage of the parking back to the bank to kind of offset that difference.
If you reverse the flow on that, you can clean up the NASTA signaling on that combination signals because you wouldn't have to worry about that right turn onto the highway.
Yeah, I think, I think the two main reasons that the traffic consultant was suggesting this flow traffic, which I think we could look the other way too, was for fueling trucks to be able to pull back onto Proctor instead of having to go up onto Pleasant Street, which they would have to. It was the reverse. And then I believe the other one was to do with the intersection that you're talking about. There were some, I had to revisit my notes, but there was some reason why this was a safer way to do it. But we can always revisit that. But as you see, you know, and, and red isn't, or you know, the sand color isn't really set in stone, but it means this was just one way to look at it. But I, I do really think it's important to have some sort of link. And I think, I think all makes the most sense with the library being there and the potential of the community campus right on the other side of it. So you could see one from the other. I think all is the natural link to have. And as you can see on the previous slide, it's kind of hard to see, but you can see there'd be a raised intersection there. And that, so that's part of the cost and that's part of the design and it's not a raised intersection. So if you were coming from the library, you could actually cross Proctor and from there be at the same raised level all the way to the campus.
So if under the original plan, is there a raised intersection?
There was.
There was.
Correct.
So are they pretty? I know that there may be preference for one thinner over the other, but are they pretty apples to apples as far as costs?
The cost would have definitely been more in the previous plan. And the main reasons is because we'd had to acquire the right away.
Right.
We would have to mitigate a petroleum leak that's underneath the gas station or that parking lot. So I think those are the two main differences, but then also you, you would have a little bit more of impacts to ODOT's facility to the Proctor. So you would have some costs there. This, this current plan though, you're, you're basically redoing the entire street. You're basically yanking everything out alt and redoing it. So it is a brand new street. So there's no cost savings there really.
So let me just understand what you're saying, raised street. So basically you're just, you're raising the street so there's no curbs and sidewalks. Is that?
There are curbs and sidewalks, but everything's at the same raised elevation.
So there's.
The street and the sidewalk are at the same level.
Correct. And one of the reasons for that is because you could, we actually designed this with input from both the bank and the gas station where you could actually put ballards in the street. They're actually mountable areas. This picture doesn't show it. But there'd actually be a place where you could lock ballards and close off the street and have like a festival street from the community campus to the library. That was one of the reasons for doing it that way. And again, this could all be revisited. None of this is set in stone, but that was kind of the vision at the time. Was because we weren't achieving the concept of the plaza from the first iteration. We still wanted to get some sort of plaza or activation area around the same proximity. So that was the reason for having the raised street.
I do have a question and just real quickly, because I want to solve the problem here. When that library meeting happened, there was a number of folks who thought, they got surprised by some of the planning wasn't quite involving the bank and the leathers. And I know that we talked a bunch about it at that time. Did the planning get to the place where the bank seems to be satisfied with what we're talking about here? And the same thing for the gas station.
Yeah.
That was a pretty significant frustration by the owners of both of those properties. So we would push back that, I'm not aware of the plannings in that particular area.
Yeah, so that, that was what I had Christina Winberry, the second intern, work on was work with ACOM and then set up meetings with both the owners of the bank, the stick looks and the leathers. And yeah, they were all very excited to see this actually.
When, when did those meetings happen?
I think like 2019.
That's what I want to see.
It was before, it was before COVID.
Yes.
But all, all, another point, another point, important thing to mention here is that all the changes you're seeing on the slider in the right of way. But there, this is not touching private property on either side of it. And here's one more.
Looking north.
Yeah, so here's all looking north. You can kind of see, we're trying to bring in kind of a bench and some different area, some different landscaping on the west side there to kind of make it look a little more attractive from the street. Part of the issue is the gas station. We thought about superimposing something else there, but we just wanted to be honest about if the plan was implemented, this is what it would look like.
You can just imagine walking down that beautiful brick path, flowers and that sweet smell of gas fumes.
And I do, I, we, we, we thought it's pretty funny that the consultant that sold me pedestrians on this. It's like, man, that is a busy like pedestrian oriented gas station.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's. Make it a coffee shop. It's totally different now, right?
Right. I mean, part of the reason we're doing this, I think, is knowing that this is down the road is so that we can get in front of some of these issues, right? With the right amount of planning. But yeah, no, I, I hear all that.
So you can see the streetlights are kind of a different concept. We'd be special ordering those to make them more of a mountain theme streetlight. Um, they're kind of inspired or similar to the ones you see in Sisters. Um, but with some, with less bracing to potentially save costs, uh, those, those ones in Sisters are very expensive.
Those are also what you think, yeah.
Yeah, something similar to that, yeah.
So this one includes the parking for the bank behind the leathers.
Yeah, we wouldn't be touching.
Yeah, because it's not realigned, right? You know, they mean.
Right, so it would pretty much leave it in place.
Right, but it's.
For there to be a walking process though, from that parking lot into the bank.
Right, and if we want to realign, it, it would, you know, basically we need to sit back down with both of those.
So there's some planning possibilities, is that right? So we're still saying there's some things that.
I mean.
Replay.
Yeah, nothing set in stone as of this point. Yeah, we're open to anything. I mean, if.
That's kind of why we're here tonight is to get some input from you guys and see which direction you'd like us maybe to look.
Yeah, if you think anything needs to be revisited, like the public input process or potentially even just some of the concepts. Yeah, we're all ears.
Just a good time where you want to get through.
Uh, i- if you don't mind, if I could just kind of finish the last couple. Um, so here's kind of the different implementation sections and it's shown on the next slide. Um, so this, this is kind of. I'll just actually jump to this one. So this, this actually shows the same thing as the previous slide, except you're also getting the map. Um. You don't, you're not getting the total. So the total right now in two thousand twenty-three dollars, a little over ten million. Um, and then, you know.
Is there, sorry to interrupt you, is, did you pull out the cost of underground utilities so we have a feel of that, that line item alone? We, we didn't.
That was.
Yeah, I, we didn't subdivide it like that. We kind of, this was kind of the easiest way to cut it into, um. Segments. So each one of these segments would be. Everything, but the undergrounding and the streetscape for each one of that, I would assume probably. What would you say? Two thirds to three quarters is probably the undergrounded.
No, 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 I think, I think it was like a third.
Oh, really? I think it's on slide six, isn't it?
Uh, it might be.
That spreadsheet.
Nasty spreadsheet one.
Kelly, remember we, we attached this question.
Yes, so budget, yeah. Thank you, council. I forgot, I forgot we even attached that to be honest. Um, yeah, so if you look at the.
Redstone, man, the red lines.
Yes, correct. Yep, exactly right. So you had to add all that up, sorry, uh. I had another spreadsheet three or four years ago that had just the total for that that I put together, but.
But you, you found like it's a third.
I want to say it was a third. Um.
I don't know how the numbers play out, right? One point two. Million, two, two plus.
So maybe not even if there may be a fourth then. I remember it being less than we, like, when we went into this project, we thought, oh, that's going to be half the cost of the.
Well, I, and I got to imagine because it wasn't long ago that you investigated the price of doing that along Pioneer and. Proctor, right? And comparative, those are much different projects.
And that was before I worked here. So I, I was actually not involved in that underground project.
I know, I feel like we were talking about that for some time, but it just, the undergoing of that is so massive.
And I think in that case, there was a lot, from my understanding of the project, there was a lot of costs associated with traffic control for ODOT.
Oh, sure, okay.
You know, all the, all the permits and all the process that we had to go through to get ODOT permission as well.
So this is more feasible to do that.
And, and just something to learn from that process, because I was on council when we went through that or planning one or two, um, was. Uh, the business is, one nice thing about doing it ahead at the beginning, you don't rip it all back up. One of the big negatives of when we did up down, uh, Proctor and Pioneer was that we ripped all the sidewalks up in front of every business and it took a while. And they were complaining that, hey, they're going to go out of business because they couldn't get customers at the door.
So we should have just done. Should just, we just screwed up all the sidewalks over the last year.
Yeah, would have been another good time.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No, I'm saying, we're doing the ADA stuff.
We just go through and did it again. Yeah, but not to the same level. I mean, if you think about where the ant farm was, they didn't have sidewalks in there for a month or, you know, more. And then, and from wasn't there, other things were there. And so it was like the chain shop and it was a plumbing store. Um, but tha- that was ongoing throughout the entire time. Now, of course. It's history, they, you know, we got out of it, but it's a big thing for businesses to rip up their entryway, uh, for a month or two at a time. So doing it beforehand, before there's those businesses there would be much easier.
So. Uh, just so I understand the numbers and I'm looking at the spreadsheet. The, um, subtotal of quantified construction is five point three million. And then there's a bunch of construction, percent based construction costs. And so the total. Of construction is eight point two. Um.
That's correct. And then there's engineering design.
Admin costs.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, the admin costs are almost a quarter of the overall infrastructure cost.
I see we broke it up. Were you always thinking we would do a project like this phases?
Yes. We didn't want to put the phase numbers on here because. We don't want to assume. Or make a assumption on what council or the urban renewal board would like to see as phase one.
Sure.
So any of these could be, yeah, the, these could be four phases. You know, you could even break the beers and straws or Smith and Tenny kept into two phases themselves if you really wanted to. Um, one thing that I, you know, if, if you do decide to move forward with this and decide to do undergrounding. What I would highly recommend is to do beers to Smith. And then also do some of the side streets and probably do Smith to Tenny at a later date. I think those are kind of two distinct projects. That, one of the reasons I say that is because beers to Smith is. Much more underdeveloped and I think could be redeveloped into a commercial district a lot more. A lot easier from Smith to tonight, you actually, a lot of those houses are currently being lived in and. A lot of the houses have been remodeled. So I think, you know, that's four point seven billion. So you could do the area west of Smith for around, uh, six million. And I think, I think that's going to be your best bang for buck is like the first phase of Pleasant Street redevelopment.
Good point.
Um. I know from talking to a lot of these proprietors and knowing what's on the ground out there, just like from a visual assessment. And being in a lot of those buildings, Smith to Beer, or yes, Smith West Beers. A lot of that is really ripe for redevelopment.
Yeah. And that segment also has the least amount of pedestrian infrastructure.
True, so you're running up.
But there's a lot of, I mean, everything from like. Strauss to Beers is residential.
Yeah. Are you ready to take questions?
Yeah, I mean, where are we at?
Um, you know, I think so. I mean, the next steps was going to be future action to see, kind of know what staff's kind of thinking at this point is. Um, bring. A draft of kind of the plan to council for additional consideration in the future. However, if, depending on the input we receive tonight, that, I don't know when that would be. Um, and then after that, we'd be going to the planning commission for a review, probably a series of meetings, and then they're getting their recommendation. Before bringing back to the city council for adoption. And then after that, we'd begin work on code modifications to make it codified. So if somebody. If one of the proprietors does decide to develop and they beat us to the punch on, you know, infrastructure improvements that they're still not providing those infrastructure improvements. Uh. And then if we have any overlays or anything else that come out of the planning efforts, we'd want those to be cut up, codified as well. And then we'd be doing a business attraction plan, hopefully an art plan. And then, um, making decisions on, you know, what is phase one for the infrastructure spending.
And, and just to be clear, uh, this plan has never been. Uh, accepted by city council. I mean, it's never been voted upon officially adopted.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, correct. So this is going to be a little longer discussion, but I think it's good background. I took some time today to drive Pleasant Street. Maps and asked Jeff, he'd be able to share the Google Maps Street View. I. Early on, you know, when I first got elected, I talked to the mayor and I was in favor. If we talk about Pleasant Street vision, there's a lot of things I buy into. However, this is my first time to really look at it and start comparing it to the, the area that was on, showing on slide five or six. And to. Look at. Look at how well it really fits. And I feel like I'm just going to start with the end. I think this plan as envisioned is out of touch with what we need in that area. If you'll permit, I'll kind of show where and how. I'm not saying that no plan would be useful, but I think this plan, and I think Kelly touched on it as we get into that. East or the eastern, east. Or east, more east part of the street, um, we get into some. Heavy residential areas that weren't necessarily envisioned to be residential years ago, but they have and are continuing to be developed as such. And with the housing being what it is, I think it's an issue. So if you'll permit me, can we pull up the maps and just take a look real quick? And I go back to the problem. Problem was we need more small scale commercial development opportunities and our commercial corridor is limited. The solution. A solution is this plan, right? I don't think it's the best solution anymore. Just to meet those problem spaces. I think it's a lot of money for very little benefit. So if you can scroll into the start of the far right over where Tenny heads down and we've got Pleasant Street. And, and you see, you get the Dutch Brothers in there right there. So if we kind of start right on that corner. We have. There's actually in this sec- section, there's only like seven empty lots and that's by my reckoning, there may be more. But if, if we start looking at it, that first row of houses on the, on the, uh, north side, those are all houses. On the, the, um, on our south side, after you get past that empty lot, it's an apartment, houses, empty lot house. And some of these apartments are duplexes, some of them are multi units that go more than that. So if we keep coming back towards, uh, west, working our way down. Lots of houses. And also if you zoom in a little bit, the sidewalks actually, I mean, it's not a great sidewalk. It's got mailboxes in the middle of it. It's not the way we'd like it. But it's not as nasty as the, the west part.
Why don't you go to Street View?
You're, you're welcome to, but just, this is, let's start here. But if you want to see more, you, you can drop in there. And I will point out, there's a couple of buildings that are not, that have been built up since then that aren't even shown on this view. So that's important. Basically, all houses, the only commercial stuff we really have going on are a couple of buildings that have, uh, parking lots coming into Pleasant. Or the funeral home when we get over there towards, uh, that area. Sorry, thank you. Funeral home, parking lots and other things. But there really isn't anything today that's screams commercial. In that space that I'm aware of. It's, it's houses and people live in there. And some of them are new and some of them recently remodeled. So I, I think that's good. Okay. So then we get over to the school.
I, I think, I, I mean, I think that's pretty, I think we're all pretty aware that that's residential.
Okay, all right. Well, good. Uh, so we get over to La Bamba area, the school and, and so. The whole community campus and school, of course, we don't know what's going to end up there, but we expect it to be really cool someday. Um, which I think feeds into this. That would be nice. But as we continue on this path, the business opportunities are either parking lots. Or empty lots that could maybe be developed or split, like we've got the old lumberyard there. Uh, off runs, which is kind of a trash heap now. I, I don't know if that's, if we envision that being commercially developed with a front facing. Thing facing Pleasant Street or not, but that's, that's one opportunity, right? There's a couple of others that, that jump out. The rest of them, lots of houses. Maybe you just keep going the rest of the way, houses, houses. And then a few businesses as we get all the way down to beers. And then across from beers, it's nothing but apartments. My point is, even though we envisioned this to be a commercial thing, we've really created a. Um, high density and, and, and single family houses on varying size lots. Uh, there's, uh, there's a major renovation going on right now. Guy took one of those old houses and turned it into a two story thing and. You pull that back up for me.
Sure.
And so I'm concerned because I have thirty-one homes and a few businesses and a couple of empty lots. We're talking about ten to twelve million dollars. To basically make cool sidewalks. Um, some sitting areas, but will it really bring? Commercial development. And, and just for. Comparison, Bell Street will bring commercial development. The Bell Street restrictions could be a huge commercial development. And relative to the dollars that are being put into that, it's going to bring a lot of commercial activity. This, I wonder what the real value that's in that kind of.
Uh, thank you for that, Don. And I don't think there's a lot to disagree with there by any means. Uh, the reason I asked, um, Jeff to pull this back up, just a couple of things I wanted to point out as we look at it. Uh, looking at Pleasant Street, especially, can you kind of get to the community campus area on this visual job? Yeah, so I mean, the, the only thing I really wanted to point out is, is one is, is a lot of these homes are. These residential homes are aging. There is a few remodel projects and stuff going on, but we're, we're talking about a more established, older. Um, really kind of deteriorating past its time, you know, housing going along Pleasant Street. But what I primarily want to point out is, is the city owns a huge chunk. Of Pleasant Street here that we control, you know, the development on being the community campus. We've got, the grade school's going to do something, right? Whether it's going to be a newer grade school or remodeled grade school, or maybe they. Move the grade school, something's going to happen there. It's time. The, the only other thing I wanted to really point out is, is on the, uh, on the other side there, where you currently have the Clackamas County Bank building and other properties is that. You know, there is a lot of conversation about that, that facility undergoing at least in the next ten to fifteen, twenty years. A redesign, kind of re- remodel, right? And so when you think about that footprint, that could potentially interact more with Pleasant Street than it does. And under its current framework, right? Uh, obviously it faces Proctor, I think being a more retail type establishment. There's a lot of reasons those folks want to continue to interface with Proctor for a lot of reasons, right? But that doesn't mean that we couldn't work with them to intersect more with Pleasant. But. I just wanted to point out, I, I, I believe the most, most critical portion of Pleasant. There is significant redevelopment opportunities along. And then when you get to the outer edges, I totally hear what council opens and say. I just think for the most part, a lot of those are. Uh, you know, more aging type residences that give us some opportunity for redevelopment. But that's just kind of what I see.
And, yeah. Yeah, so I know, so I'll start.
Yeah.
Because we can, we can look at it and point to a, uh, great thing. And you can go a little bit to the west, not too much, but a little bit, just a hair more to the west. Yeah, right there. Um, and so, yeah, I think, uh, Don, the Smith to Tenny, I think from everything we've all said and heard. That does like, I think breaking it up and that. Would, isn't necessarily the best at this time at all. Um, I'm focusing on the other parts from Smith always to Beers. Um, one of the things, um, look at, and yes, I, a hundred and ten percent agree, commercial is going to happen. But on Bell Street, that, it's going to be a different type of commercial though. And so what we're missing in town and, uh, maybe this is, you know. Uh, the education I got from Dr. Laszlo over the years of, you know, kind of the idea and the dreaming, the aspects of it. And you look at other small communities is. We have a highway that's going through town, as you all well know. Um, but that's what we call our downtown. It's not a walkable aspect. And not all things need to be on that highway. And they all don't need, you know, a twenty acre lot to be on. And so we think of the doctors or the dentists or these type of things that could even move from, you know, you know, we have one La Bamba. You know, he moved for a couple of different reasons, but one of them was the faith that the city was going to be developing the Pleasant Street. Master plan and that we were going to be bringing other businesses because he really took a. He, uh, uh, maybe still does, uh, beating on a loss of, uh, that visibility that he had on Highway twenty-six. Um, uh, every day going by moving over there because you couldn't get forgotten about in a way, but not if we have that. And we don't have a walkable without, and I wouldn't say, uh, Pleasant, uh, Proctor and Pioneer. We can walk them, but you know, you've just got a lot of semi trucks and those types of things. So that was kind of some of the things. I've sat in meetings with the two gentlemen sitting over there, uh, with, uh, a development there for, uh, the, uh. The old lumberyard, um, there. And so that does go on there and man, where I wish they, you know, would pull the trigger on it, but some of it. You know, um, it is Pleasant Street and some of those others. We've already come back to some of the development of the houses on the one side down there. Uh, by Beers, uh, saying, no, we won't change the zoning of it from, uh, because, uh, protecting it for that. So I think there is a huge value, um, I see in that, right at Strauss and Pleasant Street. We work with the family of the aging parents that owned, you don't see the house there. We work with the family of the aging parents that owned, don't see the house there because to 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 get it, have them turn it down and and be ready for the development of commercial. It gets zone commercial. So I think pieces of that, some of the sidewalks that we've seen on the east side from Smith to Tenac. Back when I first started on council, where some grants, CB, CB, CBG grants and some of those others where we've been able to. Put in little sidewalks down there, because none of them did have those. And so, you know, they may not look brand new, because it's it's been a while, but. Those will come about, you know, in different prospects of it, but. You know, I think there's that, we just don't have a downturn area. I happened to have breakfast in in Gresham on the way back with my wife this morning. I'm taking my car into town and. Dropping it off. And and so I have this, what's the street right there with the local cow and?
Main Street.
That's Main Street. There you go. I don't know names, but this would be our main street aspect of it and just pouring off and having that. And yes, it doesn't come. Now, but you know, you have to, you have to put something in there to get it going. And I just sat there and cafe D or whatever the name of the. And watching people come up and down and just like, ah, you know, that that's not gonna happen in the next five years. I mean, that's that's been there for, you know, a hundred years in a way, but. But it was not on the scent on the side of the highway, which. You know, that can be fun too, but but not as much. When you're just trying to have a nice breakfast. Anyways, that those are some of the things I think about, and some of the things that we have worked on. Already over the years to get this section, at least, I know from Smith down to beers. There. So there's a lot of potential and you know that one by the time. I would agree with you. Smith to Tenac, I think that's what we put on the back burner until the other part is. Developed, and I think it would cost, you know, you can't remember that big price tag is a lot of that down there is the undergrounding as well as the other stuff. Well, it's. Four point seven million is it is on there, so that brings a constant. Anyway, my my.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just. I can't do something Jeremy just said. He's thought the the house that was. I believe it's this one, right?
Right.
Yeah. The one that was in this lot. There's actually a family, a mom family that the family on this actually owns the whole block except for this building, which they sold to. The cleaners a while ago. And just as an additional data point, I've talked to the mom family recently, and they are interested in getting rid of those houses that are there are. Rental houses, and they're exploring the possibility of redeveloping the entire block commercial. So just another point to consider.
Same with the Sandy Lumber there when we met with him.
Same with Sandy.
Right.
Commercial and above above housing and stuff like that, so.
I'm gonna make it short because I want to just say. That I agree with the mayor and with Jeremy about a lot of those pieces of property that are on Pleasant Street. I think there there are future. And as much as I would love to see a bypass that would make the Procter Pioneer become that quiet and. Walkable part of the city is out there many, many years. And 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 nothing else, there is the fact that if we do get the bypass. That would make us three sets of streets, Pleasant, Procter and Pioneer. As part of those quieter, a lot of business focus of what we would hope would be our downtown part of Sandy. The other thing I I do see is there's a number of places that, including the place that you keep referring to about that's being renovated. And I know a little bit about that particular property. They are making it towards a rental, but they're also building it in terms of. The future being a retail. So not not expecting it to be. Residential, it's an entire life. They're looking at the idea that the community center is gonna be developed in some format. They like the idea that. People who do buy on those prop- that property line are saying things like this will become the the future where a lot of activities will be. I think it's the one over here. Is it mining, mining in Pleasant? Two story, got a lot of the siding pulled off of it, and they're doing a lot of internal.
Right on the far right.
This one.
Yeah. Yep, that one right there, yeah. So not that that's the only thing that's going on there. If that were the only one, I guess I would be. Much more toward Don's thoughts and stuff, but I I just see things from. Mining to the west as really the places where we're gonna spend a lot of time. We could spend a lot of money. But also, we would get a lot of benefit. About the old. Street being part of that and the fact that so many of these properties that face. Procter have a back to Pleasant, and I know that there would be a number of folks would be thinking about flipping their. Front door to doing something a little bit better if there was a lot of activity on that Pleasant Street. And the only way you're gonna get that is to be able to build. Infrastructure in Pleasant that makes a drawcard for that. So I, to me, I I think. Pleasant Street plan does make some sense for us.
My apologies.
It's okay, I'm done with that.
You definitely have people that are kind of betting on the con in the sense that. They're. Part of the reason I think you see some parts of Pleasant Street not really developed nicely. Is because. What are they developing it for? Because you got properties on both sides that are kind of derelict or kind of disheveled, and you don't have sidewalks around them. And so it's kind of a chicken or egg thing. And in a lot of cases, I think the infrastructure has to come first.
Yeah, a lot of times too, a city will have as. The redevelopment for different parts of the city from residential to a commercial of some kind. As you grow out, you'll get these rings of ugliness where. The buildings are just being left alone, because they're they're bedding. At some time down the road, somebody will come by and give them a lot of money, because eventually it will be a. An expensive, valuable piece of property. So. Maintenance gets deferred. Ugly buildings happen and rats and a lot of the things that people don't like to see, but will eventually disappear. And that's what people are hoping. I think towards the Tenac side of the world and even towards the. The other, the west end of the property too. So some of that stuff that looks rough is still residential. I I think people are all thinking in their minds, this will be a future development.
Rich was.
No, 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 no.
You know. Sure. Um. Yeah, I appreciate all the work that went into this plan. Look at the. Amount of money we've put into Procter and Pioneer already, removing some of the. Most of the. Power lines and the street unification. I think it's just been a wonderful effort to kind of really make that walkable. I. I feel like there is potential to make those to improve the walkability of Pioneer Procter. You know, when I walk on, you know, Hawthorne and Division and Belmont and places like that, huge amounts of traffic, but still real walkable stores and businesses and all that. And. I like I said, I think we've invested so much money there already. I would like us, like to see us how we how we can kind of. Draw. More business there, more, you know, fun businesses for, you know, walkable type businesses. I want to see, you know, how can we get some rid of some of the empty storefronts and things like that? My focus would be on on fixing those up a little bit. I don't see any benefit of having a plaza. You know, with the gas station on one side of it and a parking lot. I mean, we've already got the plaza that we have in the middle of town, and that doesn't get used very much. It really doesn't. It gets used at, you know, the Mount Festival time and and a few other zone times, but. I feel like, you know, part of the reason it doesn't get used is because it's not in the best location, and you got the highway traffic. Noise and things like that. And and so I I wouldn't be thrilled about having another plaza there. You know, not to say we can't fix up the sidewalks or something like that. And there's plenty, you know, I mean, there's grants out there with the safe routes to schools to kind of do that on Alt Street. But I guess I kind of share, you know, Don's concern is that, you know, what I see along Pleasant Street is mostly residential. What I also see are businesses that are or, you know, lots that are not well cared for. I mean. If we had some developer and let me just take a little side side route there, you know, I was involved in the government camp tip. And so there was a lot of folks with deep pockets to kind of put into that to, you know, the Kirk Hannah and Constance. And all those, you know, and quite a few other developers who kind of came forward, had some visions to to really develop things and had money to kind of make it happen. And then what the urban, what the urban renewal part of that was that they kind of helped offset some of the costs of doing that. What, but my concern here is that, you know, we're talking about spending basically the whole, blowing the whole wad of our urban renewal money on, you know, on this. Project where we don't have anybody with deep pockets. We don't have anybody with plans of how to develop it. And I I disagree. It's kind of a chicken and egg thing. I think if we had somebody kind of come forward and say, I want to develop something along between, you know, Strauss and Brunns or Strauss and. Scales or something like that, then it's the time to kind of say, okay, let's go ahead and, you know, figure out what we can do to, you know, fix the streetscape or. You know, underground some utilities in conjunction with them and and really make it all happen. But I unfortunately don't see that we have. Any, you know, some of the landowners that we have here, like the Muffs or whatever, you know, I I've heard. Before that they are interested in developing it, but years go by and nothing happens. So. When they really do have something, you know, and and that's fine. I'm not saying that they should or shouldn't, but I'm just saying that when they actually have something, you know. To put on paper and bring forward to us, that seems like that's the time to kind of consider how we can make this happen. But. Trying to spend all this money on Pleasant Street when we don't have any any commercial development. You know. Developers, you know, in the in the wings to come help help us make it a reality. I I just, I'm not really excited about it.
Were you in the queue, Rich? I got confused there. Yeah, one sec. One is, I just feel like I I want to say. Nobody's talking about dumping out the urban renewal fund and going full fledged into this. This is the first time we have had a work session meeting on this plan in five years. And the idea that we wanted to bring it back up for discussion to get councils feelings on it is now us dumping urban renewal into it and deciding to do that. It just doesn't. The other on the chicken, the egg, I I just, I gotta think about if I was a landowner or one of these properties. It, you know, I I'd be kind of looking over at the investment that La Bamba made. You know, six, seven. Years ago and 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 thinking to myself, well. He was promised by the city, which if you go and talk to that business owner, he will say, he sat down with the city, he was excited about what we were talking about, the leadership. And I can feel bad every time. Anyway, I won't go there, but. They, I do believe I would, if I was a property owner, I would be waiting and wanting to see investment by the city before I got too happy in the best. Get done.
Thanks. So since I went first and I wanted to kind of swing us in a different direction, I'm gonna come back and now modify my statement a little bit. I'm gonna agree a little with the mayor. So if we zoom out on the map. To me, the if we were to do something here, the most important areas that already been stated, it's that area around the community campus and tying it into the downtown. But. I almost think it's really limited. I think if now if you can zoom in over to Junker, the other side of Pioneer.
Yeah.
If you almost think of a cross now, instead of just limiting it between Procter and. Pleasant, but carry it, carry a cross section all the way through to the Strauss, Shelley, Junker Street loop. Now I think you have a more compelling east and westbound story, especially if you're doing that color coding, crosswalks, integration thing. That, you know, every time they go click click driving over, it's thinking, what's down that street? And I think that's more compelling. So if we were to develop something and we're continuing with this plan, I'd like to see it expanded a little bit to. Tie that other side of the street into it somehow. And then focus on the central part.
It's hard, Carl and then Lori.
That makes some sense to me, to me that, you know, whether we. Okay, sorry, I thought you were talking. Whether we fund it with whatever financial piece that makes the most sense, I think is a little bit separate from the idea that. Having a plan that says this is what we want to do when opportunity arises, I think really makes a lot of sense. That area that Don just referenced down there on Junker and. Shelley and Strauss, those kind of places. There's a lot of stuff going on there potentially. I know there's a lot of. Ideas, got a couple of builders that have decided to want to do some investment there. I think that's. Some of that is because it's come time. Some of that is because they're looking for a place and it's hard to find bare lots that don't have a lot of, take out the old stuff like the some of the Muff properties. That's totally true, because I think Dave mentioned the one bare lot that. It us in conjunction with the Muffs tore down and it's might have been. Empty for just as long since it's been emptied out of there. So that it doesn't seem to be. Somehow getting that priority to be able to build something there, even though it's just an empty lot again. But I do think without having some sort of investment by the city and a plan that gets us to the point where we've. Come close, we may not be totally finished or. In an agreement, I think we should finish up some sort of plan for our downtown Pleasant. And maybe enlarge it to include some of the stuff on Procter Pioneer. Especially connections and and places from one to the other, getting us from one spot to the other. I do hear a lot about the need for getting from one side of the city to the other, the river of the roads. The noise and the things that keep people from really using that a lot. Even the plaza, I think, could be improved. In a number of different ways to make it far more usable. As it stands, it's now a hot, dry place in the summertime, and the winter time is windy, rainy and very open and. Except for the shelter, there's a lot of need for us to do something different there to make it usable spot. A lot of things we could be doing, but I don't see us being able to move forward without that kind of strategy.
Let's go, we're gonna go Lori, Jeremy and McCathol.
All right. Well, first, first of all, sorry, I guess it's the proximity of this computer to the. To the speaker there. I've got it down on its lowest setting, so I apologize, you guys. I wouldn't have thought you could hear that. But. You know, I think Kelly was kind of asking which direction to go in. And and I think the one thing that that nobody's really brought up yet. Is how important I think it is to tie in the community campus. With. The Pleasant Street upgrades. And so when we talk about. You know, residents of Sandy being able to walk from the community campus all the way to the library. In a nice, you know, lit. Well sidewalks, walkable area. So I I mean, I guess in in my mind, Kelly, if you're looking for like. A direction to kind of start, I I'd say between Strauss and. And Smith or Strauss and Mining in that area. So I mean, that's that's kind of. I guess my two cents on as far as like a priority goes.
Right. Jeremy.
Yeah, so I just want to remind you, this is just a like a master plan, a Pleasant Street plan. This is not, we're not. Funding it, you know, where that that comes down the road. And look at it like the parks. Master plan we just went through. We didn't have all the funding worked out and where it's all coming from. But we have a plan for a lot of parks and trails and things like that, right? And so some of these are grants and some will be the CBG grants possibly and some other things like that. And it's broken up into phases, just like our parks, right? So what we're looking for here is not how to fund it, like, but to to the point of, hey, we kind of agree like Smith and Tenac. Part of it would be possibly later on down the road. That's okay, you know, and we don't have to have it built, you know, tomorrow. And play can obviously change, just like we would have. They use parks and trails. It's just an example, because that's something we went through a year more recently. But we have other master plans, you know, our street master plans, and they were looking, we have a master plan just for Mining Park and Sandy River Park. Where we put in and had all this conceptual things and and then, you know, finding finding out funding maybe ten years down the road or when it comes about. Now, I agree with you, Don, on the whole Junker Avenue piece of it. I think that's, you know, always been a great thing. But I don't want to detract from all the work that we've had here. That could be another phase. Like it could be its own phase, right? Like in that aspect is. When things to come up to develop, especially since, you know, we have a new landowner that, you know, two billions removed and. It would be nice to have a conceptual piece of that, because I do agree with that aspect of it as well. But I just, you know, I think about this and going. We have to have a plan before we can go out to get grants and and some of these other things too. We have that. I think Kathleen taught me that. Back on the Parks and Trails, right? Like, if we don't have the plan, it's hard to go out and get a grant, right, Kathleen? Like, they want to see the plan, right, and all this. And I get it, because they want to see that you're shovel ready. Certain things. So I I just stress that, let's not get ourselves too far in front of there, but let's also have a dream. And when I see a dream, it's not like dreaming for, you know, golden streets and. And the sky, it's it's realistic. This is what it could look like. It may not be that part of it. It may change in the future too, so.
And I guess a question I wanted to ask council before we move too far ahead is. The Alt Alt Street realignment. Is is do, you know, I'm not looking to, you know, what is it, scratching an old wound or? Yeah. Rid of those. Right, but I mean, is there, is there? Is there a willingness for staff and and some of us on council to maybe, you know, have some conversations and staff to check out the willingness of certain stakeholders to engage in a realignment?
And figure that, I I think that the two main property owners need to feel more comfortable. At least the last time I talked to them, admittedly, it's been a year plus about this kind of concept. But I think in, in essence, I think I'd love to see something like that move towards, I would commit some time to that.
Need to be like, I guess what I'm asking is, is there any problems with us trying? I mean, the last thing I want to see us do is continue to move forward with a plan that's maybe not the premium plan, like option A that we would all want. Or to pick a plan that we do all want, but not engage with stakeholders to find out, you know, how they feel about the plan. So that's just the sense of trying.
I'm assuming it's an expensive option.
What, to realign? Well, that was.
You would be relocating a business, right?
Well, it just depends, right? I I mean. Yeah, but it just also see, what, what is the long-term plans for that business at that location too? Sometimes it's not always.
It's also in that area that it seems like everybody is thinking more and more, that's a higher priority than the east end of Pleasant Street stuff. So to me, there's a lot of connectors that make it sensible to think about at least. And maybe you look to see what would be the cheapest way, maybe to be the most effective with our, that's better, really good. Most effective way to get our money so that we see some additional businesses come in. Because still, properties on Proctor and Pioneer, there are buildings that really resist tenants. Or some sort of development. And as much as we have done so much more work on the facades and those two pieces of road. There are some buildings there and there are some lots that just have, for some reason, have just never really done very well about getting a tenant. Much as we would love to see the old bunkhouse and. Even though we sold the, the blue Smith building. Suburban, the Studebaker Place, I see it's up for lease and looking for a tenant of some kind, even though they've done some work on it. It just still sits there and has been an ugly look. So I think there's still some work that needs to be done in some of the other places as well. Yeah, it's more than just a, more than just a, a fixing up buildings. It, it, there may need to be some look at businesses that need to come into our community that will take on some of these things, you know? Kathleen talked about the, the kind of thing, getting a, a business that had some deeper pockets to get them involved and get them to buy into some of these properties. And then let the city kind of edge them along, move them along. There are things we could do, a lot of leffering and be able to make sure some of this stuff happens. So far, we still seem to be lacking in some of those specific old pieces.
Did you have something to say?
I was just going to say, I think some important to kind of keep in mind on this, no matter what way we head in. I think something important to keep in mind is kind of creating a sense of place. And I think that's what you're kind of getting at, Carl, is like creating an area that people know about and talk about and want to go to. And so if you just have one business that is developed or one block, that typically is not going to create the sense of place. So I think that's just something to keep in mind. That's part of why you'd have a business recruitment strategy. That's part of the reason why you'd have an arts plan, that's part of the reason you'd have different place making features than our other downtown areas. So I just want to kind of make sure everybody keeps that in mind.
Yeah, I, um, I get, I get all that sense of place and all that. But I, I'm like said, I'm also, you know, looking at the, you know, who's got, who's ready to to go forward with some money and development. And I know there's some proposed development there between Strauss and Shelley and Junker, the Barlow Trail Clinic. There's some limitations I'm aware of on that loop road as far as parking because of the landlines and how those are. And so there might be some opportunities to kind of make that parcel more attractive. Or, you know, with with some of the development that's happening for the other lots, kind of make it so that they are more attractive and developable. Um, in and of themselves, so. I don't know, I just, I, I, my focus, I guess, is trying to kind of figure out is, is. Going forward with things that are, that have some folks ready to go on stuff rather than, than considering kind of this long-term conceptual. So I mean, it's, it's okay to do those conceptual plans, I get that. But, you know, when it comes to actually kind of spending a lot of money, then I'm kind of ready to, I don't want to kind of build it assuming they will come. Because then when they don't, we're really upset, you know? I mean, I kind of feel like we did that with the whole, you know, community campus, you know, we assumed we were going to be going forward and now we're still waiting. So I just want to have something a little bit more sure. Um, but to have a plan is really good and I appreciate the fact that we've got this as far as, as far as we have it with costs and things like that. It's really helpful and if, and if we can kind of, you know, I see it as David's role to kind of be starting to go out, find those deep pocket folks. And and like you said, encourage them to, um, you know, kind of sign up for, uh, for some partnerships here, so.
And just to remind you, that's the, the strategy that you guys will be talking about here in a few minutes with the presentation.
So, uh, I'll go ahead and wrap this up. Thank you for the presentation. This is kind of a good refresher and I'm sure we'll look to engage more on this and put some more work into it. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to add, I didn't want to just kind of get brushed through the conversation is, is. Is by adopting, not totally far wrong, but by adopting this plan, we also can set requirements for the future development that goes on along Pleasant Street, right? And so, you know, by adopting, you know, a some sort of plan, we start to dictate what future development looks like, you know, across Pleasant Street. To be going the general direction that we, we at least as a group on a mission, so.
Is that something we would do in our comp plan?
I don't, I don't know, I mean, do, when we.
You would adopt.
This into the comp plan?
It's a, it's an addendum to the comp plan, kind of like the parks and that, parks and trails master plan, similar to that. And then you'd be doing similar what we do with that and what would be doing with the TSPs, you'll be doing municipal code changes as well.
Beforehand, right, to be able to put it in as.
Correct.
Well, Chris, take a three to five minute break, try to get in here. I'll go ahead and call this city council meeting in order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome everyone. I always start off our meetings with a quick review of tonight's agenda. I will be calling for any proposed changes to the agenda. I'll then be going to public comment. And we did not have anybody submit for online public comment, but we do have a submittal for in person and I will call on you on that time. Uh, then we'll go into a presentation on our economic development strategic plan update. We'll go to our consent agenda, which is our city council meeting minutes from September 6th. We'll then round up with, as the, with the report from our city manager and our committee and councillor reports. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Pete's here. Councilor Smallland.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hopkinson.
Here.
Mayor Philian.
Here. All right, with that, is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing that, we'll go to public comment, as I mentioned earlier, we had nobody submit online, but we do have a submittal here in person. Um, Juan, oh, you know, hold on.
My fault.
Juan, please, please remember to state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Juan Luna. I'm from Estacara. And I have a, some issue today. I'd like to speak with you guys. I have my friend Brandy right here next to me and then I'd like to know if she is okay to come and help me. Please. Thank you.
He just wanted me to read his letter, so it's easier for you guys, because.
That's fine.
Okay, um, his name is Juan Luna, he's the owner of Casa Luna Grill. Operating as Kealan's Dogs, a food truck located in Estacara. Um, for the past two years, they're a reputable small business supported by city local customers and surrounding communities. Um, they have attended countless private and public events. Sandy Fred Meyer booked them for an event. Uh, the roasted red peppers festival, or the roasted peppers festival, sorry, scheduled for August 19th and 20th. And to be present at their location and conduct business, they happily accepted. Publicly advertised the event on Facebook weeks in advance. Fred Meyer also advertised the event on their own Facebook page in advance without any issue. Um, in the middle of that day of the 19th, two Sandy police officers approached the cart. They did not speak to Juan or his employees. They attempted to assist them, but they simply inspected the outside of the cart without asking questions and left without explanation. This left them concerned, um, and they had no idea what was going on, basically. At 4:00 PM, the general manager of Fred Meyer arrived and notified them that the city of Sandy had contacted him. The city of Sandy asked, you know that you are now allowed to have food truck in your parking lot? The city informed the manager that Kealan's Dogs needs a special permit to conduct business at Fred Meyer. As a result, the manager told them we would have to leave, or they would have to leave, um, in the event early to protect his business. Uh, this was shocking to them, but this event was planned weeks in advance. Um, Juan attempted to contact the city of Sandy through phone calls. There were no answers. He tried through Facebook messages, again, no answers. Um, and this resulted in them leaving the event in short notice. They lost a lot of business because of this. Um, the following Monday on August 22nd, Juan went to the Sandy City Hall in the morning in person to try to get more information. He spoke with Jeff Aparti, the Director of Policy and Community Relations. His immediate response was to tell us that the weekend is over, brushing us off. Despite our concern and desire for communication, he then informed them that he was a staff member publicly posting on Facebook on August 19th. But told them that they do not communicate privately on Facebook. He briefly apologized, recognizing and admitting this should have been handled differently. Unfortunately, the damage was already done at this point. Um, we asked, or he asked about the police officers that approached, but he denied requesting their presence. On October 24th, Juan wrote a letter explaining the chain of events and the concern as well as a bill showing their loss prof, loss of profit. And brought this in person to city hall. He gave two, two copies to the front desk for one each to be given to Jeff Aparti and the mayor. Sorry, um, the basic premises is he, he tried to call, he tried to email. He, they haven't received any information on what happened. They have never had trouble before, so anything else you want to say in your 10 seconds?
Yes, I just say, we are small business and then it tells me very much this city, city, Sunday city. Don't take it as much seriously. I tried to do this privately and then that's why we're here today as a person. So I just like it to have any answer, so what's going on? Because I lose business and this matters, I don't take it seriously and improper money.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time this evening. Um, Brandy, one thing, if we could submit an address to staff at some point. And Jordan, do you feel like we know enough about the situation to provide a response this evening? Or should we just stick with our standard protocol, wait until next week or till our next meeting?
Um, we could do probably a little bit of both. I mean, just to, first of all, thank you and understand the frustration. Um, as I understand the situation, it was brought to our attention, um, through member of the public. Pointing out to us that there was a violation of our code and it's incumbent upon staff when we receive these complaints about a code violation. That we do follow through. Um, and in this case, Sandy is probably a little unique. A lot of communities don't have this on their books. But I think it's 1774 or something that motorized food carts are not allowed in the city of Sandy. Um, and maybe one of the council members who are on the planning commissioner, city council at the time, has a little history on that. But, you know, I appreciate, um, you know, the history and kind of explaining this, you know, what you interpreted. And what you felt in terms of our customer service. It's my understanding that, you know, we did contact the, the business owner Fred Meyer, who then informed, uh, the food truck about the city code. Um, and I can't say why we didn't know about it, you know, ahead of time. A lot of, a lot of what we do in code enforcement is complaint driven. Um, and, you know, we didn't know that this event was, was happening in advance. Um, and I appreciate your comments about communicating directly to you in the future and letting you know about the ordinances. But, you know, the fact is that is, you know, not legal in the city of Sandy to have a motorized food cart. And there could be other cases of that that we just don't know about that happened. And in this case, a member of the public did tell us about it. And so we did follow through and informed Fred Meyer that, um, you know, it was a business that, um, you know, is in violation of our code. Um, in terms of follow-up, I, you know, I'm happy to kind of dive into that a little bit more and and report back to council on how the complaint was, was handled. It was my understanding that there was a request for compensation, which we don't normally do, um, in, in response to code enforcement. And I think there was a letter sent, um, from our, our finance director, deputy city manager about that. Um, and I, I believe Jeff also sent a, a response to the mayor informing him of the situation. When there was a letter that came in from the business owner too.
Yeah, thank you for that. What I'd say is, Juan is, let me just apologize for not getting back to you personally. Uh, you know, we, I, it's, Jordan had conversation, had just mentioned, I had conversations with staff back and forth on this. I was under the impression that, you know, we've gotten back ahold of you, so I do apologize for that. I do have a question on the motorized deal, so is that part of the nuance of this? I mean, because obviously we have food carts in Sandy, but those are trailer did not motorized food carts, is that the deal?
Correct, yeah, anything that basically has an engine, I think. Yeah, and, you know, there's other parts too, and and some of it has to do with Samplandia and wanting to have a more permanent.
I was just curious of the background.
Yeah, I can tell you a little bit about the background when we talked about that and why the motorized thing was too. Um, because it was trying to, our brick and mortar businesses were very part of the process. And 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 wanted to discourage the, just the, uh, every business just pulling up a, a, driving by for the lunch food carts or whatever coming through. Then also to be pulling a business license as well inside the city of Sandy, because you needed to have a business license, even if you were at a location. But, um, by having that, uh, to where it had to be, uh, you know, kind of more permanent a little bit in that structure of that. Because during the, we did, it was even brought up during the, uh, re-identification of the I2. Uh, businesses as well, allowing for that, like, for instance, in front of like the brew pub that was down there before.
I, I guess, I guess a little bit, not pushback, which is, I'm trying to think through it, right? Is, I mean, what stops somebody from just leaving a trailer, you know, right? And then the other would be like the Sandy Mountain Festival. Uh, well, I guess I, I would need to call it the Music Fair or Feast. Is, you know, like they, they bring in temporary, I hope I'm not throwing them. But I, I certainly don't want to be, I think it works just fine. Sure, but, but to my point though, is do, do they need to get business permits and, you know, and the whole deal, kind of like, let's just be talked about, right? Like that, like what is it?
So I was, I was actually not involved in any of this. I think I was like off that day or somewhere else. Um, but what I can tell you generally speaking is that Fred Meyer should be getting a temporary use permit for their event. Safeway is really good about doing that. Fred Meyer has had so many managers. I mean, it's a different manager over there every six months, that every time we had to re-educate them on, there's a process. So that, it's really on Fred Meyer, honestly, to come in, find out what permits they need. Find out the regulations before they then go and hire people to come to their event. That's really what the issue is here.
All of that, right? But would the event permitted to?
We would have told them at that time that if you do have a food cart, they need to get business license, a Clackamas County food handler's permit, which it sounds like he does. And they cannot have a motorized vehicle, so they would have been told about that.
So, um, so I guess I'd like to see us kind of maybe reconsider that. I could see not, again, showing up with food carts all over the place rolling, but having, you know, like at the, the music in the park and things like that. I would think it'd be nice to have a food cart show up for that kind of thing. I mean, that's really helpful for our, um, our events. But also if there are some special events, you know, an opening or something like that, having that flexibility where it's kind of a one-time thing. Seems like it's, you know, but again, still get the permit and the, you know, whatever else is necessary. But it seems like, you know, there's a difference between having food carts just rolling, you know, all week long around town or even stationary, but still mobile. Then, you know, than having kind of a one-off event, I guess.
Let's go Carl and Don.
So a little bit of history and I was involved in some of this too. This was originally designed to be kind of an experiment, so the stuff that happened on the food cart place was permitted. Get it started, develop businesses, and there was a lot of effort to make sure that the, the brick and mortar folks were not terribly impacted. Because there were some things about the, the Mexican place across the street from this, that location. But also it was designed, and I remember this, if you look at your notes back. But also it was designed, and I remember this, if you look at your notes back in those days, it's been several years. This was to be reviewed in a format that when something like this were to happen, we would look at. Did we do something wrong? Did it not work as well as it should have? Let's relook at the code and see if we can't find a better process. And then secondly was that the meant the mobile, the driving kinds of. Food carts was specifically not included because of those brick and mortar places. We wanted to try to see how we could focus. The attention on that particular piece of property and other places like. And there is a reason for that. So if we want to change, I think I'm sure like to talk about it. I think there is some possibility. For change, but specifically that code was designed to keep the kind of sprawl that we were having. We had several at the Plaza, if you remember. Several of those places were drive in and move away and struggle to keep everything under code and. Little bit of a wild cowboy kind of a rodeo place. So there's a background to that.
I'm assuming we're talking seventeen seventy four ninety food and beverage carts. Right. Okay, so that section falls under our development code section. And I know we've been lectured from our city attorneys in the past not to read too much into the intent. Section because the intent is usually not binding on us. But I will point out where confusion may exist in that intent. You're probably reading it right now. Where it says the purpose of these regulations is to permit food and beverage carts on a year round basis where eating and drinking is such as are permitted outright.
Yeah, I actually wrote that intent. So if you want to know that it was.
But I'm not arguing the point. I'm just saying because of that, it would be, you could see where someone could read it. Nobody reads this stuff, but let's assume somebody did. They might not understand that a one time event falls under this category. So that's what we cited them for.
Yeah, there there is a code section, though, that if you want to then you get a temporary.
Use for that. So is that the section where?
That's where Fred Meyer failed to get the permit.
So that's the ultimate issue here, not seventeen seventy.
It's it's both. I mean, I I would be happy to bring it back. It would have to be me. So I was kind of seventeen. So I'd be happy to bring it back in the future if you want to explore that more.
I think it's just one of those things that we could be clear on, you know, that's our intent. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. Moving forward into our agenda. And let's go to a presentation on our economic development strategic plan update. Hey, Mayor, we appreciate it.
We have Elliot Weiss from Community Attributes Inc., who is here tonight to give an update to the city council on our. Economic Development Strategic Plan, the work so far on that plan and. Some of the information that I covered so far and kind of the work ahead too. So I think. You did meet Elliot during the contract approval. I'm trying to remember if he was here or not. I know the Economic Development Advisory Board has, so we're happy to have him back and give this brief update to the to the city council.
Welcome, Elliot.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me all right?
We can. Thank you.
Fantastic. I'm actually at an economic development conference in Oklahoma City, joining you from my hotel room. So I want to make sure that the technology was all lining up. Okay. We've got a brief presentation here and then happy to take some questions. I'll start sharing my screen. And is that all coming through all right?
Yes.
All right, the primary purpose of this is to give you a little bit of a status update. It was earlier in the summer, I think, when we first met. Over the course of the summer, attended two meetings of the Economic Development Advisory Board. So the big takeaway here is bullet number one, we're underway. We've been working to coordinate our efforts over the course of the summer months and into the early fall. With your other consultants, three J on the comprehensive plan and Echo Northwest. On the employment opportunities analysis. But during that time, we've also begun data collection for task two, which is listed on the right there, the landscape assessment. And that will quickly turn to task three, the SWOT analysis. Which we'll use in order to identify goals, strategies and actions that form the the sort of backbone of your strategic plan. The really exciting new news here or relatively new news is that we will be in Sandy next week from September twenty sixth to the twenty eighth. About two and a half, three days of intensive in person, community and stakeholder engagement. It will include, as I will detail in a few minutes, meetings with staff, meetings with stakeholders, attendance at. Future Fest, which is taking place at Whippersnappers on Wednesday evening, the twenty eighth. So we're excited to get on the ground and get to know Sandy in person. In terms of next steps, we're looking at a draft vision and goals by mid October. And anticipated completion sometime in Q one of twenty twenty three. So it's a pretty intensive process. Really from September, I would say through January or February. And just to clarify, I said draft vision and goals is the next step. One of the things that the comprehensive plan is doing. Under three J's leadership is to develop a draft vision for the city. So we're very much working in tandem with them to determine what the economic vision for Sandy is that sort of nests within that larger citywide vision. This is a scheduled graphic. It's too detailed probably to read well on screen, but I wasn't intending for you to. Identify all of the icons here. This just lays out the trajectory of the project as a whole. And speaks to some of the milestones that were on the previous slide. We're here in mid September and you can see a few blue dots in a couple of weeks. Those correspond to the meetings that we'll be having when we are in person in Sandy. But very much midstream on what is that chart true through. Sort of yellow green task, the existing conditions and landscape assessment about to turn the page to jump into the SWOT analysis. And will very quickly be upon the visiting and goals. I'd say by the end of November, some of that high level work or contractual work will be done. And we'll be moving into strategies, actions and implementation planning. Which is where we kind of roll up our sleeves on the really tactical or actionable items. That we'd be including in the plan and recommending for staff to to take forward or to integrate into their existing work plans. A few things we've learned and I'll show a few slides with a little bit of the data that we've collected so far, although it's certainly not exhaustive. Much of this will also probably not surprise you, but it's important for us to get smart on where Sandy's at economically. Sandy has grown rapidly since two thousand. Population is more than doubled and forecasts predict that Sandy's population will increase to about seventeen thousand or eighteen thousand people by twenty forty. Which would be an annual increase of about two percent on average over two decades from twenty twenty to twenty forty. That two percent in context is quite rapid. Most cities in most regions do not approach that over an extended period of time, such as two decades. Retail trade is the largest job sector in Sandy. It's about thirty percent of all jobs. Sandy still predominantly a bedroom community, although that could be changing. The point seven eight. Jobs per housing unit is a metric that we use to sort of explore. An economic role for any given city within a region. And under one job per housing unit. Generally could be considered to be a bedroom community, although that's admittedly a soft term that has some room for interpretation. Just means that you're not a regional jobs hub in the way that some of the, you know, more central suburbs within the greater Portland region would be. Still, Sandy is an important part of the larger regional economy. Many residents commute to Portland and Gresham for work and many workers. Commute to Sandy from other places in order to find their employment. The median household income in Sandy was about seventy three thousand in twenty nineteen. Which is higher than some of these other outlining communities I mentioned on the slide, but lower than the Clackamas County median. And I've got some data on subsequent slides that go a little further into that piece. I borrowed these slides from a presentation that I gave to the Economic Development Advisory Board. So they may be familiar to a couple of you, but. Over the course of those two board meetings that I've attended, we had some questions. And we tried to bring a few data points to bear on those questions. The first was, is Sandy a complete community? And so we wanted to look at which employment sectors were underrepresented or overrepresented compared to a larger regional geography. So we've got Sandy, the Portland Metro and Clackamas County all here on screen. And compared to those other geographies, the sectors that are underrepresented in Sandy were services, manufacturing, construction and resources. Wholesale, transportation, utilities, finance, insurance and real estate. The overrepresented sectors were both retail and then government slash education, which are grouped. There was another question, what is Sandy's market area? And so we looked at regional commuting patterns and I spoke to that on the other slide, but. Twenty percent of Sandy's workforce also lives in Sandy, so they both live and hold jobs within the city limits of Sandy. Thirteen percent of Sandy resident workers. Sorry, of Sandy residents work in Sandy and then Portland and Gresham are the most common resident destinations and worker origins. And really after Portland and Gresham, it drops off a fair bit. It begins to be very granular. That. Column at the far right shows all other destinations at fifty six and forty three percent. But we have chosen to represent on this chart the most common. So Troutdale at two and one percent or Beaverton at one and two percent. Oregon City at one or two percent are greater than any of the other individual jurisdictions that comprise the the fifty six and the forty three percent in the other bars, if that makes sense.
Elliot, how a question here, how big did you have to be to register, right? Like. I mean, I'm just thinking of Clackamas County, county cities. I I. Because Oregon City is the only one I see there. You know, I don't see a Happy Valley or a Canby or. Or or a Lake Oswego or Nestica, you know, these are all. And I and I only bring this up. It really doesn't have that much to do with economic development, but as I think about our commuter shed and what direction they're going and. And what, you know, roads are using, they're primarily going. To Monoma County.
Yeah, fantastic question.
Well, sure, but I mean, it's really.
Could go south.
Yeah, all right. Yeah. Okay, this is an interesting observation. I didn't mean to get you on the spot, Elliot.
No, not at all. I do have an answer for you. I don't know that it's a perfect answer, but. This data set, it's called the LEHD data that stands for longitudinal employer household dynamics. It comes from the U S Census Bureau. The data is available at a variety of geographies. So what we chose to represent here on this slide. Is for jurisdictions, which means you would have to be incorporated as a city. But we could do counties as jurisdictions and we can go all the way down to. Boy, certainly zip codes. There may be other census geographies that are a little bit smaller that allow for. The data to be rolled up. I I don't know if census tracts are available off the top of my head, but there are geographies that are smaller than individual cities. It's just for the purposes of this exhibit, we we looked at cities and we'd be happy to look at it according to other geographies. In fact, at one of the. Board meetings, the advisory board meetings, I showed this data both by. City and then by zip code. And if you look at the maps of those two, the distribution looks very different, which means there are a lot of people. That may straddle jurisdictions such that, you know, when you look at the zip code data, which can cross jurisdictional boundaries. You see that a lot of people who are commuting into or out of Sandy are going to places very close to Sandy. Even if they're not captured within the city boundaries of Sandy, whereas if you look by jurisdiction only. You know, Portland's such a big destination for employment that Portland is going to register as the largest destination. Even if, you know, it is not registering as one of or some of the largest zip codes. I don't have the map handy, so I don't know if that makes sense, but there are a lot of different people can use this that might shine a light on that question.
Yeah, he showed that there and I think one of those you can think of is boring, you know, nine seven zero zero nine right outside. Coming into Sandy to work, you know, or even the the nursery is going the other way. Big numbers, but that doesn't represent because the county would also then include the cities in the county. So you can see where. Numbers are great, but they kind of have a lines you have to draw and.
Got it. Cool. Thanks, Elliot.
Yeah, of course. And this is just a snapshot. There are some other data that we would bring to bear in order to more fully answer the question about what is Sandy's market area? I mean. I think the question from the board members came in the sense of there are all these outlining communities. They may or may not be incorporated. Are they coming to shop in Sandy? If so, what for? Are we missing any opportunities there? And so there are. Other data that I I think can help to answer this question, but this LEHD data. You know, where are people going from and coming to was a sort of snapshot response to the question about the market area. Another question was, how do we create an adequate number of living wage jobs regardless of industry? This is just the median wage by industry. For, I believe it's the county, although I should have specified on the slide. It is not just a national average or a national median. The median household wage is approximately sixty thousand dollars. Notice that that's lower than the median household in Sandy. So I believe that to be county data, but. I can certainly clarify or follow up as needed. What's important, I think, here, though, is the sectoral balance. So. The only sector identified in the data that pays a median wage over that sixty thousand is healthcare. And a lot of these other industries are paying under the median wage. Service jobs, including those in retail, have a median wage that is less than half than the total median. And again, it's a slide from a board meeting that we had, but we looked at. Just anecdotally, the change in household income in Sandy versus the change in home price in Sandy. And certainly home prices have appreciated more rapidly than wages have. And so. I understand that housing is a concern across the community and it's certainly a conversation happening as part of your comprehensive plan update. It's related to the economic development strategy because. I think quality of life and accessibility of a high quality of life is a very important economic consideration. But we wanted to bring this wage data to the table as well as an input to that conversation and an input to. The types of industries that we may choose to target through the economic development strategy. So what we hope to learn from you, and this isn't all tonight at this meeting, this was intended as a brief update, but again, we're going to be in person next week and we're excited about that. We want to start thinking about the findings from the economic opportunities analysis being done by Echo Northwest, some of the findings from our work on the landscape assessment, which includes associate economic profile. Want to learn a little bit more about the community contacts, the character of Sandy, development capacity, key sites for new development. Infrastructure, transportation, opportunities for infrastructure and transportation investments and long term planning in those areas. To support Sandy's economic ambitions and other opportunities that Sandy has to grow its economy. And these will all be topics that we will be exploring deeply when we're there next week. So a bit more detail on that trip. The purpose, first of all, build the clear view. So we're going to do a lot of work in terms of orientation. I've been to Sandy in the past, but not as part of this project. And so I'll be coming with a different. Purpose and a different perspective when I'm there next week. And in addition to the sort of broad orientation of just walking around town, seeing some of your assets, seeing some opportunity sites. We're going to do what we're calling strategic excursions. These are just more specific site tours and they're done in an iterative way, which means. As we learn more and more, we've earmarked time to say that sounds like something we need to see. Let's go see that. And in that way, our three days there kind of. Each day builds on the previous day and we can go and learn more by virtue of having learned a little bit more, if that makes sense. Want to hear from advisors and not just advisors, but key stakeholders. We can get hung up on terms. There is a technical advisory group that is primarily city staff across multiple departments. And we will be having our first meeting with them, but then more. And I suppose Economic Development Advisory Board, we've got meetings with both. They're both next Tuesday, the twenty seventh. But I mentioned stakeholders, call those lowercase a advisors. Just folks that we need to be listening to and hearing from in order to get a wide range of perspectives on economic ambitions for the city. And then finally, this is our best opportunity to hear from the community at large, to hear from the public, to hear from residents. We've been doing some engagement via Sandy Speaks, but in this case, being in person will be. At Future Fest, we'll be talking to folks who are already coming there for the comprehensive plan. And really trying to engage in a meaningful way with individuals that maybe. Aren't engaging online or don't feel like they can fully capture the breadth of their interests. By engaging online. And so again, just to reiterate, we're very excited to get out there and. These are some of the the high points for our our plan for those three days. So that is what I have by way of update. And again, I'm happy to take additional questions.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation, Elliot. Are there any questions before we let them off?
Yeah, I had a couple. Who's on your technical advisory committee?
Do you want to come up to the mic?
It's all, all city staff except for the director of the chamber. So I know Chris is on it.
All city staff? The entire?
No.
No, the committee is comprised of all city staff except for Chris Jones. She's the only one that's not.
You're saying department heads?
Most, yeah, except for myself. Kelly, Jeff, are you on the pack? I can't remember if you are or not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so department heads and you, is that?
And Chris Jones.
And Chris Jones. And question for Elliot. You know, given the pandemic, you know, like I used to work for the Forest Service and, you know, we have, I don't know how many employees are still at the Forest Service, although they had the building closed down for most through the pandemic and then reconstruction or something. So how do you deal with, you know, situations like that where now with the pandemic, so many of our employees that used to come to Sandy to work are now working from home?
It's a great question. How we deal with it is not necessarily a straightforward answer. There are some data sets that are updated frequently enough that we can get a post-pandemic understanding of where things currently lie. Some of the data sets from the Census Bureau, for example, are not that way. We talked about the LEHD data earlier. That always lags by a couple of years. And so what we, in those cases, need to do when we do not have post-pandemic data is convene the right stakeholders to have the right conversations to ground truth that data. What's changed, what hasn't? And then we will draw strategic implications from the data that fit, not just what the data is telling, but also what the stakeholders are telling us has changed since then in terms of the, the overall context. So it's, it's really a mix of trying to identify what data sources we can, that give us some insight in how it's changed and then also trying to ground truth anything the data tells us, whether it's recent or, or not frankly, with additional outreach and engagement.
So if the Forest Service office down there by Fred Myers has 100 employees, are we assuming that that's 100 jobs in Sandy? Does that count towards the Sandy jobs or, you know, even though they may be, you know, sitting at home in Lake Oswego or something like that?
In the data, they would. In the data, it would be by, yes, place of employment, the address on the employer that signed the paycheck. But again, we, we would presume that all of them are commuting into Sandy.
Thanks.
Right, yeah, Carl.
Yeah, I have a question and then a comment. We'll do the comment first and that as part of the future plan, the co-plan, investment in times and stuff. I'm in a realtor group that has about 15 realtors that are involved. But much like what Kathleen was talking about, many of them just don't come into the office in a real-time format. They're, they do a lot of sales inside Sandy, but interactions with the community pay into the transit and so on. But they don't really come into the city and it's very difficult for them to become involved in what's happening, even though they have a high level of, of commitment to what's going on with houses and how that all looks and businesses and so on. One of the things that we've been trying to do is to take that group of about 15 realtors and as these kinds of questions come up, put that on the table and, and make that kind of a, of a community or a committee kind of a conversation so that I can spread that over, in this case, to Shelley. I wonder if there isn't some of that kind of thing possible for investing in some of these things where people are now more remote and not getting involved in the, in-person kind of things at any one time. That's the comment I had. And then the suggestion I have is, is that this thing at Whippersnappers, although I've heard it a couple of times here in the, in the council and I know it's been on the internet, I don't think it's gotten much advertisement. I, I think people are not sure of or maybe don't even know about what's happening on that location. And I'm wondering if we have a, maybe a little bit more strong attempt to get that information and notice out. So, so question. If we had groups of people like the Forest Service or maybe in my case, the realtors who do a lot of work inside the city, but just don't get here a lot. How do you, how do you expect to get them to be involved if it was, your statement was that it was a complex situation? Sounds like you just missed it.
Well, we would certainly hope to engage them and I'm, I would not want to give the impression that, you know, the number of meetings, the, the schedule graphic have on it implies the extent of our outreach. I mean, we're trying to employ as many channels as we can and I would be happy to have conversations with either of those groups. In fact, that's maybe just something to jot down as a follow-up. Make sure we reach out to them and give them the opportunity to engage in this process. And that's, that's not true with only those groups. That's true with anyone we, we think we'd like to do outreach to. So that's certainly something we're open to.
Well, thank you very much Elliot. Thank you for the presentation to the, oh.
One more question. Yeah, suggestion on slide five, where you've got the chart. If you could break up government and education and the government as one bar, education as another. I think it's nice, we, I mean, probably both looked at each other, wondering why that number was so high and that could be helpful. And then also just going on that remote worker thing. As you in future look, and you're at a conference now, it's a great time. Maybe, maybe others are talking about it, but how do you deal with remote workers and how that's going to skew the data? Because lots of us aren't going back, at least not to the level we were before. And that's a, that seems to be a national trend. So curious is how we model that moving ahead. Thanks.
And when you get out here next week, make sure you guys take them out on Bell Street 362nd or potential Bell Street 362nd.
Bring your boots.
It's on the agenda. Certainly the remote work thing is an evolving best, this is, you can appreciate. None of us know exactly how those trends are going to endure or what they are, but it's, it's a topic here at the conference and it's going to be an ongoing conversation for us. But we'll, we'll do our best to keep an eye on that and to bring whatever best practices we can glean to this project. But yes, I'm appreciative of the point and we're trying to be the best with the data that we have.
Well, thank you Elliot, appreciate it. Enjoy your conference.
Thank you everyone for having me and have a nice evening.
All right, we've been ahead on our agenda tonight. We moved to the consent agenda from our, that includes our city council meeting minutes from our September 6th meeting. Unless there's questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to adopt our consent agenda.
I moved to adopt the consent agenda.
There's a motion by, and is there a second? There's a motion by Councilor Hockenson, a second by Councilor Sheldon to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or to be a thumbs up. Aye opposed, a nay or a thumbs down. Motion carries. All right, report from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to our Public Works crew. Couple of weeks ago, nine days ago, we had another September windstorm with public safety power shut-off. Probably a follow-up item for us is to bring back PGE, give us a better understanding of those shut-offs. As you know, we had a couple of our homes in Sandy that were affected in the Bornsted, Cascadia area. And, you know, we're looking out for them, getting a lot of communication out. But hitting a weekend, you know, we have some critical facilities that were a part of that shutdown that required constant monitoring, keeping the generators full so that our residents could have, you know, water service. So really appreciative of them having that extra effort. The police department, you know, stepping up their patrols and their communication. Definitely appreciated for that weekend. Something to kind of talk to you guys about tonight is LOC conference coming up in early October. We have every counselor signed up for that. A couple of things logistic-wise. Jeff made reservations for Thursday night for us to get together as just the city of Sandy for dinner. Trying to get a head count on that, if there's any plus ones especially, or if we're just going to do it as a team, council and staff.
Okay.
I may have a plus one, but he probably doesn't want to be the only plus one. Let me check what.
Okay.
Carl. Whoa, wait a minute here. Let me think about that.
And then Thursday, we have a tour set up for the Crooked River Complex, the wetland complex over there. I think it's, yeah. So we have that set up and for, I think it's in the, one of the morning tours. But on Wednesday, you know, they have the conference sessions and the breakout sessions for most of the day. But in the afternoon, there's, there's breakout sessions. But we've talked, I think, or some of, some of us have talked about possibly doing a tour as a group during that time. Something that's, you know, a topic that we've been discussing for a while is community campus and park improvements and, and Parks and Recreation District has a few new parks, pump tracks, bike school, parks, new skate parks that they're working on. And Rochelle reached out and they would be available to tour those parks with us in the afternoon. And Rochelle will come down to join us too. So I wanted to see if there was interest in that.
Yes.
Yeah. Should we go to Larkspur also?
We could, we could. I, you know, was kind of focused on the, the outdoor stuff. You know, they got one park that's under construction, I think a skate park that we could talk to their folks. I was really kind of just penciling one to three, because I think there's a keynote after that. So I don't know how much time we would have, but I'll work with Rochelle on getting that set up and, and for the afternoon.
Last time we were there, we went to Redmond and talked to folks at Redmond and that was really.
Yeah. At the public comment, response to public comment last, last meeting, we talked a little bit about the camping ordinance. Just wanted a brief update to the council on that and we can come back with, with more information. But all the police staff have been trained on the camping ordinance. And so they're, they're trained up on, on the ordinance and how to respond and, you know, what areas are permitted for overnight camping. They are working on a handout as sort of a, a guide for both staff, but also for homeless individuals, build a handout to them that would have resources on there as well. I will share, share that with council. There hasn't been a lot of calls of note. You know, there's the day-to-day stuff where maybe someone in the, in the park or something like that, you know, but I, not a whole lot of stories to share quite yet on enforcement of the code, which I guess is a good thing. But, you know, obviously they continue to respond to issues and calls about, you know, folks that maybe camping or, or in areas that are not permitted. But as I get more information, I'll, I'll be able to share that with, with council and then also share that resource when they get it completed, which I think will be by the end of the month. And it might be useful for, for your purposes too, for, in terms of directing people to services. On that, I, I updated the council on the situation at the library. We're, do have three of those outlets that have been either removed or protected. There's some tampering that goes on with those, I understand. So we do have to stay on top of it. There is one outlet that is still in service, but it's the one on the front of the building. So during the day, staff has oversight on that. That's the one that we would have the, probably an opportunity to put a protection on that would be lockable. We could still use it. Our staff needs at least one outside outlet. Problem with that outlet, it's tied to, I guess, the, whatever the main breakers are for the library. So it's a little harder to de-electrify, but if necessary, we can look at that too. But just want to let you guys know. And then another thanks and a kudos to the Parks and Recreation Staff. $68,000 grant was successful for the ORPA and that's for the two shelters at Bluff, at Sandy Bluff Park, at the dog park in, in the park. So we're, we're happy about that and getting rolling on that project when we receive the grant funding. And then follow-up on the no truck signs, probably have seen them. There's a couple of those up on Legan Sand and then on 211 DeBarco. We've also sent in requests to, or we've reported them to the GIS services to have those truck routes, at least, at least notify those, those map services that this is not a truck route. Problem that we run into is that a lot of those apps, like Google Maps, doesn't know what kind of vehicle you're driving. But our police will continue to, to enforce it as some issues come up.
I appreciate that. I noticed that the one down here went 211 going right onto DeBarco, but almost missed it because it's so close to.
It's too close.
Too close, so close to 211 and I was like, what, what was that? So, you know, you're coming around a truck, you're not going to see it. Maybe it could be up a little bit further, just to, that was the only comment. I was super excited to have seen that, asking for years and years.
Okay. Another thing I wanted to bring up, you know, as part of our, our work with our wastewater treatment plant, one of the things that we're looking at in mitigation of the compliance issues there is supplemental environmental projects. And one of the opportunities could be looking at wetland mitigation or wetland restoration. A couple of years ago, there was a proposal from a developer for the wetland on Ruben Lane. And at the time, the council decided that wasn't something that we were interested in, had some issues. It's kind of a Beaver Dam pond. You know, in light of the fact that it's in the watershed with Tickle Creek, I thought I'd bring this up to the council as, as a, maybe another opportunity before I gauge very far with the property owner or anything like that. I want to get your temperature, if you, you would be interested in this as a potential project to improve water quality in the Tickle Creek basin. Because that is kind of a part of No Name Creek that then eventually feeds into Tickle Creek. Just bring this up as an opportunity so I don't spend too much time on. And if there is an interest, given that the council had kind of.
Is this to offset the EQ fines or whatever? So we have to find some project for that, right?
One, one option is that's needed desperately. We've used a previous fine, you know, with the water treatment plant. It's noxious weed eradication on Tickle Creek. That's needed again, because that's been at least probably five, six years since.
It was like, yeah, about six, seven years ago.
And so, and just walking it and stuff, you know, there's, you just kind of have to, you know, keep up with those blackberries. And there's Holly, there's a bunch of other ones. And it's, it's a pretty easy project with, doesn't take a lot of staff oversight and all, because there's kind of ready-made contracts for it and contractors that do nothing but that. So that's something I think would be really helpful and, and really important on Tickle Creek to kind of just have that, because our, our people can't really do that kind of thing. You know, our staff, our right-hand spokes.
I was going to talk about this when it came to council. But since you're bringing it up, I did have a meeting with Clackamas Watershed Council last week and that particular watershed wetland came up as a really high potential for them in terms of the thought of being able to expand that, to be able to protect it and to be able to use it as part of that mitigation. So it's for them that they thought it was a, one of those best-case scenarios about being able to do some kind of work in terms of using the money to be able to enhance our watershed. The other thing that came up was the, I believe it's Tickle Creek between Legan Sand and, why am I not remembering the road that's? No, that's true. Well, it's, anyway, just east of Legan Sand, a piece that goes down through the, the development that the mayor lives in. And anyway, that piece of property, a piece of, excuse me, stream reach has a lot of potential for putting in some plantings to protect the shade and develop some of that cooling effect on the, some of that stuff has come down or been knocked down for some reason. So there was that one that brought up.
East of Legan Sand.
DeBarco? DeBarco?
Oh, it's.
Jacoby.
There it is. Jacoby, between Legan Sand and Jacoby.
Okay.
We've got a number of things going on there. There's some reservoir in there and there's some trails and such. I think it's a storm retention. Yeah, there's that. I guess that's what it is, right? So that was brought up as well, as far as shade going, which would be a good, really appropriate that way. But certainly the wetland on Ruben would certainly brought up.
So Jordan, I don't think you're hearing anyone saying no. And then when we meet with the oversight committee next, maybe whittle it down. You know, I mean, if you want to go a certain direction with some funds or something brought up by the committee.
Yeah, we'll be in, we'll be at the LOC for the next meeting. There's, there's kind of a time constraint, but that's why I kind of brought it up tonight.
Like to tell them or, or to get.
To formulate these ideas, to pitch these ideas as, as sets, supplemental projects. What kind of, within the next couple of weeks sort of thing.
We need to give them some ideas. It sounds like we have some ideas.
Yeah. Some of the problem lies in is that we don't know how much to do. And you could do a little bit, like purchase the wetland and that would be some money. But how do you improve it? What do you do to keep it all put together? Sometimes those are as much problem as just figuring out a project.
What's your budget?
If anything benefits the community, you'll probably get our support.
Yeah. Right. That's why we pay you.
But what you're talking about is purchasing land and I'm just asking what the budget is.
Uh, well.
Pretty inexpensive, this particular place has no potential development.
So, uh, can I help Jordan? He can't answer some of these questions.
Probably is some work to be done. So people are out in public just yet.
Yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying, Don. I, yeah, I think, I get what you're saying. So. It is what it is.
It's, it's, it's under the active enforcement issue. So I'm just trying to walk line of asking for the council's input on the projects without. Any too much into the, the weeds.
All right.
Into weeds. So to speak.
No, I'm sure you'll watch the.
Yeah, now I've heard a lot of it, we're treating the weeds.
Elliot mentioned the future fest. I just wanted to bring that up. We'll get that, the word out. I think Shelley was out putting flyers out today and, um. It's passed it all over website and Facebook and stuff, so we'll, we'll sure to get the, the word out about that, but it's next week.
Excited?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, Don.
Hey, um, just one item on your PGE talk. We have Maria team come out. I think given that we're doing these, uh, public safety plan shutdowns every year now, between now and when climate chamber change reverses. It would be good to talk to them about changing out how they feed that critical infrastructure for us. Not just what are you doing about it, but they can, in their longer, they can put it in their asset plans to, to feed those from somewhere else. Because the majority of the city is not part of their safety quarter. So it just happens to be those fringe elements that are coming in off the safety quarter.
Right.
Feeds and so if they were to repeat them, we could avoid that in the future. So that would be, to me, that's the topic for them. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Carl. It's fall and I'm seeing a lot of tree, tree leaves on the ground and in the streets and so on. So, uh, those who are out there near a storm. Gutter or drain of some kind, if you see a big pile of leaves starting to develop up. It's a, would be a great community, uh, help to be able to clean that out. Just pull a few leaves out. I know our city. Public Works folks are out there looking and that kind of thing, but sometimes if it's right there in front of your house, it's a really easy thing to do and. I have one in front of my place and it always seemed to get plugged up and nobody likes to see. Flooded roads. So there's that. Uh, the other thing I'm looking at and hate to bring it up, but I think that. It's a beautiful property that, that all the development, the landscaping is going on there at the, the new health center on. Ten Ike and Highway twenty six, but of the sidewalk grates where the trees are, I think the weeds are starting to get to be. I thought I saw Tarzan walking through there the other days. It, it's just really a contrast in really look super thin, the sidewalk looks like it needs to be worked on. I think we've done some work down in the main part of the city, at least.
And so it's a section on Ten, Ten Ike.
No, it's a section on how twenty six.
On twenty six in front of the new.
Right, brand building.
They have the grand opening now, what, uh, did you get the invite for the?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Good looking landscaping, but the sidewalk looks like it could really do some help there. And since I'm there. The sign on the side of the police station is starting to really get.
Yeah.
Grayed out and really gets hard hit by the sunshine and we have such a good looking facades and other places, it wouldn't hurt to paint that a little bit. And then I know I'm not going to talk about the weeds growing in the islands down by the main part of the city down towards the west end, but.
Thank goodness.
Thank goodness.
But they're there.
You don't want to talk about those. Uh, and then on Wednesday, Shelley Dennis and I and a couple of other folks, including the newspaper, are going to be putting up the. Pollinator signs for the city. It's been a while to get there, but, uh, really looking forward to seeing a little bit of that kind of a progress and. As we move along here and start getting some of these projects into place to do the pollination side of the world. I'm excited to see at least the signs going up, so.
That's it. That's why my kids call you the B man. Kathleen.
So now that, um, Jenny's back and I just kind of want to find out, you know, how, how we can kind of make this happen is getting what I talked about last, at the last meeting is a crossing markings there. East of Melissa on DeBarco for the Tickle Creek Trail. I'm just kind of, you know, I don't know if that's a Ryan thing or a Thomas thing or Jenny thing anyways, just kind of. I, I can forward the information to you and you can give it to whoever needs to.
Yeah.
Great. Um, the other thing is that when Rochelle was talking about, um, something to us here at a recent meeting. She mentioned something about Christmas lights and I'm just trying to understand. Is that the lights that we put down on the. Highway twenty six or?
Cause no, actually.
Said a special event or something?
Yep, yep. They're, they're planning on, uh, they're planning on decorating mining parks, so parts of mining parks for a walkthrough. Um, and they're still working on that. So it's kind of a, of a, of a work in progress, but, um. They're looking at some cost recovery and doing some Christmas theme type stuff in the park with, uh, coral groups and maybe some vendors and, uh. Adult beverages and, and various things, different nights of the week. I think it'll be really cool.
What's the cost on that?
She, they're working all that out to, though, trust me, she'll, she'll figure it out. They're doing some great cost recovery stuff and they're on top of it.
Okay, well, do we, do they have a budget allocated already? I'm, I'm asking Jordan.
Yeah, we have some quotes, um, where, where she's trying to work out.
I guess, I guess I'm correct. Is this a parks board thing that you are aware of it, Lori, or?
I am aware of it. Yes, that's what I'm telling you.
Again, is that a parks board thing?
That's an event in our parks. I mean, this is kind of, uh, when Shell, Rochelle started, I mentioned this as an idea that I heard and also thought. Oh, it's a really good idea of getting more people on our, you know.
It's a great idea.
We do in the summertime with all the events and this is a way to kind of get more, you know, foot traffic in the winter and kind of coordinate with the tree lighting to light up. Have you ever been to the grotto in Portland?
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so we would purchase lights. It's, it will be thousands of dollars, uh, to purchase lights that we could reuse. Use staff and volunteers to help install the lights. Um, and then keep the lights year to year, you know, probably some replacement costs and things like that. Um, but as Counselor Smallwood mentioned that. They are working on plans to try to get sponsorships and get vendors in there to kind of start, you know, get some cost recovery, um, with the program me too.
But what's the budget that's been given to them?
It's not, I'm asking.
But it's not your role as a counselor, Kathleen. We've already approved a budget for parks and rec and they implement it. You do not, you're, as counselors, we're not allowed to get into the weeds of every single.
Thank you.
I'm hearing forty thousand dollars. Is that, is that what's been allocated to this project?
I think it's probably going to be, uh, she's, she's gotten some quotes on how much the lights would cost and it's probably be somewhere around twenty to thirty in there. And I don't know if that includes installation on some of that or not, but again, these are lights that could be used, you know, every year, probably add to the collection and evolve the program. The recreation budget and the senior budget and parks and recreation, um, because of all the vacant pieces are actually pretty healthy. Um, and I, you know, I agreed with Rochelle, this is a way to kind of invest in that park and have an event that, that happens. Sure, that could be something every year. Um, and, you know, and we're trying our best to find, find out. The best ways to do this at the least cost as possible using, you know, staff and.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just, you know, concerned as a city council that other city councils are all aware of this. And this is the first cut time I've heard about it. So just duly noted. Thank you.
You knew, you knew a forty thousand dollar budget. So how's that?
Cause I just found out the other day, just, you know.
I didn't even know that.
So you found out before me.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Well, I, I heard that. I didn't.
Well, I mean, Counselor, I mean.
Thank you. I just, you know.
Yeah, you know, again, this is an idea that is being worked on, you know, and then as we get closer to actually having the plans and the act, you know. It's been shared with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, I, I think as a, it's not even a recreation advisory board, uh, Parks and Trails Advisory Board. But, you know, I think of course we would want to promote this and share it and, you know, have the council involved. At this stage, you know, she's working on the plans and having, you know, staff kind of generate some ideas and.
And I guess from, you know, from a parks. Lover, I just want to, you know, what I keep hearing from other people on this board is that, or from this council is that we don't have enough money for our parks. And so taking a large chunk of that money and doing kind of a one. Then, and I get to talk is, that's my concern is like, is that, you know, it's a cool and groovy thing. It's white hat. I love it. However, you know, let, when, then we start talking about, you know, we don't have enough money for parks and.
Well, this is.
So anyway, I just, I just wanted to have my, you know, chance to say and. Move on to the next person. So I didn't really want to get into conversations.
All right, uh, Rich.
Yeah, um, so I, not a lot from the committee points, but, um, so tonight's meeting and some other things that have just happened over my time. You know, I'm really learning a lot about the scrubbing renewal funds. And, uh, one thing I'd really like to see us start to prioritize a little more is what our, what our agenda is with that. I mean, I sat here quietly tonight because, um, it's another big expenditure expenditure. That would be super high and I don't know where that fits into our product. And so, um. I, I really respected staff's time and, and effort and I really liked the presentation and I'm sorry that they're not here to hear me say this, but thank you. And I'd really like us to work before we start getting into this stuff like this. They really like to come up with some priorities. Uh, and what that looks like. And then we have an idea instead of this, uh, shiny slush fund of money that we. Pull, we're not really sure if that's what we want. So I just want to throw that out there and that's all I have.
Oh, yeah.
Lori.
Yeah. She's muted. Or are you muted? Yeah, there she is.
Yeah, well, the, the, the screen wouldn't let me unmute, so I was trying. So just kind of going back, I was going to do a parks update. They're working on some great cost recovery and, um, you know, as a group, uh, diving into some very unusual and unique things. And, uh, I look for great things to come out of both the parks board and, and Rochelle. She's doing a great job and I just would like to. For two cents, our job at, as council is not to micromanage staff. That is not our job. We've hired these people, uh, they're professionals and we need to let them do their jobs. So, uh, Rochelle's doing a great job, uh, looking at some very unique ideas that I think are going to really benefit the city. And she's going to make sure that she covers her bases and does cost recovery with it. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Lori. Jeremy. Yeah, you heard from Elliot earlier today, uh, when they're in town, we kind of got it scheduled up for, um, econ meeting. So that he can be there in person, uh, cause he's been there only virtually in the past. So we'll have that, um, next Tuesday. Um, and then you heard about the, uh, Whippersnappers event. Uh, it's all being publicized there, but. Um, so I was glad to hear him tonight. It was, uh, kind of fun that you all got to hear some of those statistics and. Just like we had heard it in the past is, you know, we wish we could get more granular into what we know as our community and our city limits and outside city limits, but. Kind of have to work with the data that, you know, is provided there. Um, the only thing else I got is a question on, uh, street trees. In front of US Bank there, um, I don't know, six months, nine months. I don't know, time flies here after COVID. They removed the trees right in front of practice. Can I make? And I'm thinking, well, they probably removed them because of, you know, push up the sidewalks or whatever. Then you see them, you know, they're just, they're there, missing there, but they never replanted them. And, uh, I was noticing that because it's got stuck in traffic flipped over. I'm like, oh yeah, I was going to bring that up. But they went out and cut them down one day and, uh, they're, they're. Healthy, just like the other ones that, you know, sitting in the car looking at them, but. I just want to make sure that weren't taken down just because they didn't want them in front of their business. Where, I'm sorry, US Bank. I am so sorry. So, so, so sorry. I, in my mind, I know what I'm talking about by said the wrong.
Yeah.
Sorry, US Bank. Um, if you're familiar with that from a, um, a while back, uh, I was going to bring it up, ask him about it when I saw him. Cut down, but you know how that kind of goes it. Unless it's the day before or the day of council, you can lose track on some of those as you get to work and forget to jot them down. But anyways, that, uh, I like to just make sure it wasn't just because they wanted their view, visibility from the highway of their building, because they're. Beautiful street trees that got picked down.
We'll look into it.
Uh, for me, just, uh, thanks for those comments, Rich. You know, I, I totally agree, um, on our urban renewal fund and, and, you know. Jordan, I, I feel like over the course of the last three and a half years, we've, we've spent some different times talking about the need for that. You know, I remember talking about the urban renewal kind of strategic fund budget in Lake Oswego that I, I think you implemented. You, you, you were in charge of putting together, you know. It, it, I mean, to, you know, one of the things though is we are going to have a lot more work sessions on those projects so that we can prioritize them, right? In that, so those are still important to get those informational settings, but, um, we definitely need to focus in and prioritize that urban renewal budget. Pro, and, and really kind of focus on that before we, we need to walk before we run a little bit on some of that, I think. So. Uh, with that, uh, thanks, everybody. It was a great city council meeting. Thank you staff for your preparation.